Welcome, everybody, to our meeting on September 20, 2022. I apologize for the change of date this month. Schedules are schedules or schedules, so I'm glad we can get together today. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if the temperature becomes unbearable where you're going to turn the air conditioning back on, it doesn't seem to interfere with the communications to the camera, everything, but if we do, just remind everybody, including the board, speak up, be loud, be heard. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to start off the meeting with a public hearing for the video conferencing as directed by New York State. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion and enter into a public comment session for the video conferencing policy. Do I have a second? All in favor of both motions, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in the public comment. Is there a public comment in regard to the video conferencing, Village of Rhinebeck video conferencing policy? I could read this all again if you would like, but we've gone through it in nausea in terms of what this means, but this really is a policy of how we, the Public Board, has to operate, whether we're doing a meeting like it is today, or we're doing a hybrid meeting, or we're doing an emergency meeting, and that the fact that the governor has not extended the executive orders, which expired on September 12, I believe, you know, we are now into that state where if we need to do a hybrid meeting, we have to have this policy in place.
This is for the village board as well as the planning board, right?
Yeah, you're right. Thank you for that question.
All public bodies.
It's all public bodies, whether they're the village board, planning board, zoning board, comp plan, I can't think of any others right now off the top of my head.
Any committees that we have that are subject to open meeting law?
They're not subject to, the subcommittees are or not.
They're not.
They're not, that's what I thought.
So any committee we have that's subject to open meeting law?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Comments from the board?
Thank you, we don't have the equipment currently to do any of this.
Equipment, as we approved, is on order, and we don't have a date for when it is supposed to arrive, but.
Hopefully soon.
Hopefully soon.
So, one quick question, like, so one of the extraordinary circumstances appears to be that, you know, vacation. Are we gonna, we are gonna use this for vacations, and that's considered like an extraordinary circumstance?
It's legal, yeah.
It's up to you. We gonna change that, keep it?
It's allowed under the safe guidance, but we don't.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, but we don't have to have it in here.
I mean, I once remember, a couple of years ago, I think I videoed in from Nova Scotia. It was nice, even if I was on vacation, just to even be able to, you know, be in touch with the meeting, see what's going on, so it keeps at least the trustees, you know, we can be involved rather than when we go on vacation.
Well, and also, we have a few members of our other committees who spend, you know, two or three months away from Rhinebeck at any given time, so like, it would be nice to allow them to be able to participate if they so choose.
Right, it's not just us.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment section. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Village of Rhinebeck video conferencing policy as adopted on September 20, 2022.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So passed, thank you very much. Hopefully, we'll get the equipment and can move forward.
Great.
Okay. Public comment section. Before we go into the public comment section, I have a public comment.
Do we want to clarify?
Yeah, you can do that next.
Okay.
And my public comment is, and Karen's not expecting this, but I would like to acknowledge Karen McLaughlin as being awarded, at the NICOM conference last week, the Distinguished Finance Officer Award.
Wow!
I will say that at NICOM, I understand it was unanimous that Karen received this award, I just want to know that we submitted her reference and application to the award on July 28, 2022. Karen is aware that we submitted for this award because I needed her help to draft a letter, to be honest with you. I asked, just a funny story, I said, Karen, you gotta help me here because I don't really know all of the certifications that you've received, could you just come over and just give me a couple of it? She walked in with a box full of certificates, right, and we spent the afternoon drafting a letter with Karen's help and Martina's help, but I just want to note that Karen has achieved the following professional acknowledgements besides this one, is she's earned a Certificate of Professional Development and Advanced Level from New York General Finance, blah, 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 and served as a downstate council from 2017, 2020. She is currently serving on that board. Karen was appointed to the New York Class Governing Board in 2019, currently serving in what position on that board?
A board member.
A board member, all right. Past president of the New York State Society of Municipal Finance Officers for 2002 to 2003, and continues to be an active board member and Certified Municipal Finance Officer, and has attended NICOM fall training for which she was recognized, she was recognized at NICOM this year for 25 years at NICOM, and got another certificate. And achieved a Certified Member of the National Ski Patrol, not to leave anything out, from Jiminy Peak. Yeah, so Karen, I'd like to congratulate you on yet another significant milestone, and we're so thankful you're here.
Very good, thank you so much.
Okay. Sorry, but that was my public announcement.
It was awesome.
All right, so in the public comment.
I was just gonna mention that as part of the conversation that we're gonna have about Sixth Mulberry Street, we're planning on scheduling a public comment for that, so if you have a public comment about Sixth Mulberry Street, please sit tight, we'll be doing that next week or the week after.
Public comment. Diane, Diane, excuse me, Diane, you have to come up?
Yes, yes.
You have to be acknowledged.
Just one question.
I don't care.
We will make the, we will make the announcement tonight, and we will announce it.
We will set the date tonight.
We will make the date, yes.
For workshop?
For the public comment.
Yeah, for a workshop.
Okay.
Yeah.
John, I saw you had your hand up.
Did you say next week or next meeting?
We're gonna figure out when, when we talk about that.
You might want to turn the mic on, John, if it's not on.
I need to be close to your mouth. That better? That is better, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
No.
Seven's up.
Seven? Seven up?
Perfect.
Okay. John Rosi, 53 Violet Place, Karen, congratulations. I started working with our tree commission in 2017, 2018, not planting, working on grants, as certain, the mayor and a couple of the trustees will remember. Two things really resonated with me working with Meg Crawford, and they continue to resonate. Number one, the trees really need the tree commission, and number two, the tree commission really needs money. And recently, fairly recently, within the last year, City of New Canaan is devoting $500,000 to their trees, City of Syracuse, $2 million to their trees, City of Rattleboro, $1 million to their trees. Where are they getting this money? In a word, it's COVID, COVID relief funds from the federal government. And I don't want to put Karen, although she's got all these certifications on the spot, so she probably won't mind, but from what I can gather from New York State Office of Budget, the Department of Treasury, you know, we've received $262,000, and Karen, a few months ago, was kind enough to chat with me about the monies that had been spent, and that was like in early May, and by my recollection, it was about $30,000. So it seems, give or take, we should have about $230,000, is that fairly accurate?
Yep, just about.
So I would like for the board to consider, among the other possibilities of how to use this money, let's put $125,000 into the tree commission. That's my thought, that's my recommendation. That would give the tree commission good long-term, at least three years of planning, and I think that would help out tremendously.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Victor.
Hi, Victor Britton, 34 South Street. Karen, congratulations, that's, you're very modest, which is great. Lydia, thank you for adding that piece of information. The thing I'm concerned about is, at the meeting in July, when this was being discussed about having Ty and Bond do this, or having a planner do this, it was said, questions were asked, and comments were gonna be pulled in from the public to the planner, so the planner's already submitted a preliminary report, there was gonna, it sounded like there'd be public sessions in the process of building the report. There's essentially five weeks until your deadline at the end of October. So, you know, there was, one of the public asked about outreach to the neighbors, and the planner was gonna outreach to the neighbors, and I'm not aware of that, and it's not evidenced in the report. The planner was supposed to talk to the CPC, and I'm not aware of that, and it sounds inferential, like the planner was talking about what the new comprehensive plan likely would have, but I'm not aware of any of that, so I've got concerns about that. I just want to remind that you guys are the legislators, and so this is legislation, and you have to, you know, kind of be, get down on the ground on this, and not just go forward. I hope that the comprehensive plan that's in place, and it's, there are things that were cherry picked out from Ty and Bond that are consistent, but there are things that are inconsistent. And so, I just want to remind you that David Gordon, your attorney, the village's attorney, said that this was aggressive, this proposed plan by the applicant at the June submission, and that there was some reference in one of those meetings where the attorney explained to you guys that there needs to be some consistency with the comprehensive plan in place. So all I'm saying is, you guys have a tough job, you've got to look at that, because you guys are the ones that write the law, and, okay, it's hard, so I appreciate your hard work. And the other thing I just wanted to comment on, too, is that the density of that proposed plan from June is not consistent with the density of any 1.4 acre zone around that. So there's, if you read through the preliminary report, it's selective about how things are posited, and so because you guys are intelligent, I just want you to make sure that you actually have, it was supposed to be a data-based report, and I just saw a lot of inferential information, not data. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. David.
Hi, David Roth, I am one of the sponsors behind the Mulberry Plan. I'm just, just a question, it seemed like Mr. Britton has seen the preliminary report based on, is the preliminary report been made, made public?
Yes, it has.
It has?
Yes.
On the village website?
Yes.
And just in the folder for this meeting?
I haven't seen it. Thanks.
It's just on the cloud, right?
It's just on the cloud for this meeting.
Any other comment? Thank you for your participation, we will move on to the rest of our meeting. The next thing what I would like to do, I'd like to read into the record, as, because business sometimes goes on, and we had some other meetings, we had a, we had the paving bid, which three bids were received on Friday the 19th, the bids were reviewed, and the board approved Peckman Road Corporation for $174,916.50, and asked to do cuisine, manor, parts of Rockefeller, and parts of, what was the other one? There's one more. Huntington? Huntington, Huntington, yes, in that paving bid. And to my knowledge, the paving company is due to start on or about October 12.
Oh, great.
With that information. So that's the latest from Peckman, who's been awarded that.
How much of that is gonna be from CHIPS? From our CHIPS, Chips in Hand?
Karen, do you have? What we have in hand is like 200 and some odd thousand in CHIPS money right now.
I think we had planned to use all of it, use CHIPS for all of that project.
We're in excess of $200,000 right now, I think 217 is what sticks in my mind.
With our extreme weather, with our paved New York and extreme weather added to that, yes.
Yep.
And the bid was like 60 something, wasn't it?
Pardon?
175?
Oh.
The bid was 174,916. Yeah.
I mean, I really hope that CHIPS is gonna reflect the increase in asphalt prices over the next, next year.
You hope so.
I hope so. And Karen, did we ever find out, did the pothole fund ever?
Rick, you're speaking into the mic, some people can hear you, please.
The pothole fund, did they award us the pothole fund?
$12,000.
$12,000.
Okay.
All right, so we also have John, what's John's last name, Free, I don't have his last name, for the wastewater department.
Fraveli?
For, for something like that. Fravel, that's it, John Fravel, I apologize. John Fravel is joining us for the wastewater at $24 an hour, this pending his review of his application, and is now awaiting his acceptance.
Yeah.
So, is there an update on that?
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, good. All right, he was here, just so everybody knows, John came back, did an onsite review of our wastewater plant, and was going back, and we're, he wanted some time because he's moving.
This gentleman from Ohio, right?
Yes.
But he has not accepted yet.
But he has not officially accepted yet.
Fingers crossed.
But we made the offer, okay? All right, that's it. Next, ambulance transfer. So if everybody, you guys remember going back to January, the request from the Rhinebeck Fire Department was essentially it's, when we surplus equipment, we have to put it out on surplus, the fire department feels that they could get a better deal if we transfer the asset to them, they can sell it. We basically negotiated between their lawyers, our lawyers, and everybody, an arrangement that allows us to transfer the ambulance to them for a dollar, allows them to sell it, but allows them to proceed to go back towards the purchase price of the ambulance.
Of the new ambulance, yeah.
Of the new ambulance, which, if everything goes well, should be here in a month, a month and a half, we're still waiting for final confirmation on that. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the agreement to do, between the Village of Rhinebeck and a municipal corporation situated in Duchess County, which is us, and here, which is the village, and the Rhinebeck Fire Department, a New York non-for-profit corporation, right, with a mailing address here in Village of Rhinebeck, to transfer the ambulance for a fee of $1 to them to then post for sale and give back to us. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
So it's a little arduous, but basically, this goes back into a capital account to pay for the ambulance.
It goes towards the purchase price of the ambulance, correct.
Yeah, the fire department has been raising money all summer for this.
And the Interact group.
And the Interact.
I think that's what she's talking about.
Yeah.
And the Interact for the fire department has actually raised enough funds to cover the ambulance.
Yeah, with like, an extraordinary grant as well from the Frost Foundation, so it's great, it's true community effort.
Good job for them.
Yeah.
Good job.
It keeps the fire department capital reserve whole for whatever's gonna come next.
Correct. We won't need it.
Something red, shiny, expensive.
Something super expensive, I'm sure.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Karen, thank you. Next, Lydia, I'm gonna transfer to this, to you, to Sixth Mulberry Street Planner Update, and if you're going to have Ty and Bond present?
I'm gonna bounce this to Brandy.
Perfect, that's the way this should work.
Brandy, is this your information that you want to, no, this is?
No, that's for the next item, I mean, number two. Good evening, everyone, I'm Brandy Nelson, I'm a project manager and vice president with Ty and Bond, and I am here this evening on behalf of one of our principal planners, Gordon Levy, who had conducted the preliminary review for Sixth Mulberry Street. He says his regrets, unfortunately, his wife had a medical issue come up, and she had surgery yesterday, and he is home with her and could not make it this evening. He would be happy to come down another time if you'd like me to get him scheduled for the next meeting, if this is still something that could use his input. So, just in terms of context, and in light of the comment that was received, our, our task at hand here was to take a look at the proposal for a zoning amendment over at Sixth Mulberry Street. A zoning amendment, as I'm sure you guys understand, and as Mr. Gordon, I'm sure, has explained, is something that has to encompass a large area, so it has to be considered in the context of the village, and that's something that, if this moves forward as a zoning change, there is a whole process, and that's really the process that has a public comment period, in addition to whatever additional public comment you guys would have. So, we wouldn't normally receive a proposal and conduct an independent public comment, we would do that in a framework that you guys have set up for any sort of local law change. And so, just, just in general, for framework, we wanted to try and give the board just some objective information to consider as you're considering this zoning amendment, and so I can just, you've all received the memo, I assume, and I can go through and I can summarize it, and then I can take questions, if I can answer them, I'll certainly respond to them, if I need to get back to you, I can certainly engage Gordon tomorrow and then follow up with you guys later this week. So the first thing, just contextually, Sixth Mulberry Street, as you all know, is a former school, the Father Bergen Center, and there's been a proposal made to adaptively reuse that building and the site, and we were asked to evaluate a number of considerations for the board's review in evaluating whether they want to move forward with a zoning amendment. As you are all aware, the village is currently undergoing a comprehensive planning process to update the 1990s-era comprehensive plan, and so that is ongoing, there's data being collected, and there's a subcommittee on housing that we did reach out to via the consultant, Michelle Gregg, who is working with that committee. We also took a look at the Duchess County Housing Needs Assessment, which was published and released this March. The county had done a fairly extensive survey of housing needs and availability of housing stock throughout the entirety of the county, and there's some data specific to this quadrant of Duchess County that was helpful in reviewing. And in addition, we just gathered some data regarding the current housing stock that is located in the village, just to try and provide some context and framework for the discussion. Key amongst the planning process efforts that are underway are increasing, excuse me, the supply diversity affordability of housing in the area, as well as balancing that against community walkability, I think that's a longstanding objective that the village has been working towards over the years, and of course, preservation of historic character, that's very important in the community, and there's even been an expansion of the historic district. The site in question is a parcel that's 1.44 acres, which is fairly large for the village. It's located in the R-zone, which is generally residential, so that's generally single-family, and two-family structures and accessory dwelling units are also allowed with special permit. Currently, multifamily housing is not allowed, except where it existed prior to the adoption of zoning. And in terms of just bulk density, the property could be subdivided into up to seven lots if it were just vacant land, and each of those lots could theoretically have a single-family home and, with a special permit, an ADU, so that would be essentially two dwelling units per seven lots, so that would be a total of 14 dwelling units. And so, when we're doing a planning analysis, understanding the maximum density is usually a benchmark that we use in reviewing a proposal for a zoning amendment, so what would the underlying density allow now with the same special permit process? A little bit about the building itself, it is considered a contributing structure in the historic district, the historic district does extend through the area in question. The structure itself has been modified a number of times, and so it's not individually listed. From my experience with Chippewa, I can tell you, contributing structure generally means it's something that just is contextualizing the fabric of the neighborhood, and it appears that the school was built around the same time that the church and the housing in that area was built, late 19th century, early 20th century, so it's just reflective of the pattern and the context, the pattern and development and the context for that neighborhood. The proposal for the zoning change would take that 1.44 acre lot with the school building and would result in the subdivision of that 1.44 acre parcel into a total of five lots, with four of those lots being consistent with the current zoning and having single-family homes on them, and the remaining fifth lot maintaining the existing school building. There are several additions that have been added to the school, and those are proposed to be demolished and leave the more, the original portion of the building, the historical portion of the building intact for an adaptive reuse of nine multifamily two-bedroom units. So in looking at this proposal in terms of density in that neighborhood, what we did was, we said, you know, four single-family homes, nine units, dwelling unit-wise, that's a total of 13, we're comparing that against the 14 that could be allowed with a special permit, given the underlying zoning. So from a dwelling unit perspective, I would say it's equivalent, roughly equivalent, to the underlying zoning proposal. The creation of any residential housing in that neighborhood requires means for sanitation, so that's potable water, which would be through the village's system, and also wastewater treatment. We have not independently evaluated the site for wastewater treatment, but we do have in the record a report from the developer saying that they've conducted a feasibility report that has assessed the feasibility of having onsite septic systems, which would be consistent with many of the other houses in the neighborhood, and that, at this point, it does appear that that's a viable option for them to accommodate their proposed density with septic. For you guys' purpose, and it's something I think is nice to rely on, is that that would be subject to Duchess County Department Health review and approval, and just from my own practice with land development, that's something you seek out fairly early on in the development process, because it's really gonna drive the total number of units that they can accommodate. So, if, if the zoning were too fast, and if the developer were to move forward with a further proposal, I would expect one of their earlier tasks would be engaging the health department and doing some preliminary design work to make sure that they do in fact have that capacity. They cannot get a CVO until they would be able to demonstrate that they can meet the septic requirements there. So, you know, density is a factor that we wanted to look at, utility services, water, sewer, those factors that we wanted to look at. Commonly, in residential developments, traffic impacts are also a concern, so traffic impacts, again, we compare to 14 dwelling units, 13 dwelling units, that would be less than what would be allowed by the underlying zoning, and as far as historically, I don't have contextually any personal experience of a school in operation, but a school generally has two large peaks of traffic activity, one in the morning, associated with drop-offs, and one in the afternoon, associated with pickups, and that drop-off and pickup, if you live around the school near or have lived near a school, can be very intensive for, you know, an hour period in the early part of the day, and then in the early afternoon portion of the day. So, you know... So, you know, historically, I imagine there was a fair amount of traffic that was generated. But again, we're comparing it to what would be allowed in the underlying zoning, and, you know, 13 units versus 14 units is going to be roughly the same amount of traffic. Then in terms of meeting some of the anticipated objectives of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, they have not, the Comprehensive Plan Committee is not at a point in their process yet where they have been able to move from data gathering into policy development, so they're fairly early in their process right now. Gordon and Michelle did have a conversation about what sort of issues were rising to the surface. And there are a number of issues around housing affordability that rise to the surface, preservation of historic resources, maintaining community character, and advancing issues around sustainability and climate adaptation. So those, in the early sort of information gathering sessions that Michelle Gregg has had with the Comprehensive Plan Committee and the subcommittees, those seem to be the issues that are rising up as some of the important ones. Those will be further, you know, just separately, that process will be further developed after the listening sessions are complete and the survey is collected, and so those are still in evolution, but that, those are the early things. So using that, we just circled back onto this proposal to see how this proposal may address some of those issues. The proposal would include the adaptive reuse of a contributing structure in the historic district in terms of bulk density, so, you know, size and shape of buildings. The existing building that is there is part of the contributing fabric of that neighborhood, so there would be no change. It wouldn't get larger than it is now, it would actually get smaller than it is now. And proposed new houses would, subject to site plan review by the planning board, I imagine, be similar in character to existing single-family house fabric. So we don't see that as a significant deviation from the neighborhood character. It would provide diversity of housing. Again, there's not much in the way of multifamily housing in that portion of the community. And that portion of the community is walkable to many of the resources in the village, the village business center, the school, recreational facilities. So it has a potentially good location for being very walkable. And then, and generally, it is also considered supportive of sustainability goals to adaptively reuse structures. There would be obviously some demolition in this case and some renovation, but often in the literature that we receive on sustainability, adaptive reuse of existing buildings is considered points towards certifications such as LEED and things like that. So that is some information. Again, the process that you would undertake, you know, taking this information, if you have questions that I can answer or I can take back to Gordon, I'm happy to do so. This is not a review of a proposed zoning narrative or any legislation, it's just information for your consideration while you think about whether or not you are moving forward with a zoning change. And then that process will go ahead on its own as well.
So my first question is, I'd like to see if I can address Victor's, or get an answer for Vic. In terms of, if I can summarize it correctly, your question was really in regard to the size of the lot and the density proposed by the developer. Is that correct?
My, I was really commenting on the preliminary report, which, which really is sort of a worst-case scenario. I don't think there would be a practical way to divide that into seven lots. And so that's sort of an ultimate, like the most you could mathematically fit under that lot, and I don't think that's a realistic piece of information to help.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think the more natural way to look at it is the scheme that the applicants have provided, which is the four and then the multifamily. Because by the time you get Board of Health approval and you're going to have quite a wingspan for your leach fields and things like that, that even if you take the gymnasium away, you're probably going to really have the four. I mean, I've always been interested in this transferring the development, trying to calculate how many total units you could have here. And I think as a practical matter, that would be the 10 instead of the 14. But I don't know what that leads to as far as, I'm just saying.
Yeah, but I'm trying to address, I'm still not sure I understand, Vic. Yeah, let me, can I ask my question?
Yes.
Excuse me. And my question is in regard to, you, I think you were on a density issue, right? And with seven lots, too big, right?
Too dense.
Too dense.
I just think in the preliminary report, I don't think that's a realistic benchmark. I understand the benchmark, but I just want the board to know that that's like a mathematical worst-case scenario, and that in no way did you get data from what I could see that says what the density is in the area.
Well, so that's, part two of my question was, you asked, where's the quantitative data associated with that analysis, correct? You really.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, that's what you're asking, is there any? And so, you know, my question to you is, you know, when you look at that, is there a quantitative analysis that allows you to arrive at the figure that, you know, the seven units or whatever, how are you?
Seven lots with seven lots.
Yes, the 13 total units proposed are less than a theoretical seven, single-family units with seven units, or the 14 two-family units that could potentially be built. So what you're saying is, from a density point of view, their proposal is less dense than what the maximum could be.
Correct.
And then, and that's a theoretical number or a quantitative number?
Well, I mean, it's a theoretical number, but the basis is how many acres are available and what the zoning would allow in that space.
They took the space and divided it by 10,000.
That's what I'm trying to get, but that's what I'm trying to get to. How did you arrive that that's an acceptable number?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly as Brand suggested.
I just wanted that public.
Yes, absolutely. And we did, we did not separately.
Is it eight?
It's 8,000 square feet.
And you can't do, you can't do septic with 8,000 and then have a house.
So let's address these one at a time if we can. So in terms of the question about the layout, we did not separately do any sort of like alternative layout on this lot. So we just, we took the proposal from the developer, we looked at it, we looked at the size of the lot, we looked at the level of zoning, you know, do the math, how many lots could you get in there? As far as the septic is concerned, there are setback requirements. Because the village has public water, the setback requirements are much smaller. So often, I would say, you need, you know, an acre to accommodate a well in septic. When you have water, you can generally get it in on a smaller lot. But that said, you know, my big caveat was, there needs to be some work done by the developer to confirm that they can sustain the number of units in an onsite leach field. You know, that's really.
They're going to need that area where the gymnasium is for the multi-unit.
I guess one of the reasons why they're tearing it down.
I would think so.
So let me, before, let's, hold it, let's not go back.
Is this a form of, I'm sorry, this is a form where we're supposed to speak or not? I can, I.
The board, right now, this is where.
But I also cannot.
David, this is the board that asks questions, right? And we are trying to set up so that we have a basis of the report that we are given, so we have an understanding of that. And then going forward, we plan to hold a public forum to bring everything from the public forward so that we can do that in a public.
Only there because we can answer probably a lot.
Well, that's, yeah, if they know the answer.
Yeah, I know. But if you, we can, the board can, the board can ask you a question. How's that? If that's what you want to go. If the board thinks that there is, like, I have a question.
I'm asking you a question that whatever you want to answer.
I was talking to you, excuse me.
That's my question.
All right, one more time.
Sorry, but, yeah. My question was, have you done any analysis based on what would be approved, given that the density and the square footage allowed would be, would work out?
Yeah, so we hired Holbrecht Engineering out of Kipsey. Holbrecht came in and did pre-creation tests, I believe, for throughout the site. And together with plans that our team provided, a proposal of 2,100 square foot homes, three-bedroom homes, we asked him, with the village code, to lay out, to analyze the viability of a septic to each of those homes, and then analyze the viability of septic for the remaining nine units that we proposed in the adaptive reuse structure. Mr. Holbrecht did that work. That was part of our June presentation, and that viability was confirmed. Obviously, more, a final protest has to be done and observed by the Board of Health, and to your point, there are steps that need to be taken to legalize that and make it a final inspection or approved condition, but it's viable.
So the viable thing was the June scheme, though, which is the four, which is the five lots?
Correct.
And.
Correct. And the septic just supports those number of bedrooms, that density of units and bedrooms is viable.
So what he's saying, though, what you're saying is that you have viability for three-bedrooms on a lot.
Three-bedroom homes on each of the four lots. And then the 18 bedrooms that comprise the nine two-bedroom units in the adaptive reuse of Mulberry Street.
So it's hard to know.
Their bedrooms total.
So it's hard to know if there were four or five bedrooms on a lot, if you'd have enough space.
No, they did it based on three.
I know, that's what I'm saying, because if you, but if, the assumption is that there are, you could have two, a two-family home there, you're going to have at least four bathrooms, I would assume. So the sizing you did for a smaller, smaller unit or small, small number of bedrooms, then potentially you'd get with.
That's true, because three, well, it would be three plus an accessory dwelling, which would have one.
One, so it could be four, right? Four, four minimum.
It's a good four.
Thirty divided by four is seven point something.
But I guess at the end of the day, the village can only approve, the code can only support a three-bedroom home.
What, and, or whatever a septic would approve.
A legal condition to build a four-bedroom home, or add an accessory dwelling unit, which certainly we wouldn't do.
You can.
No. Why would we approve something that a septic doesn't support?
If the septic doesn't support it, they can't. But if it could, but if it could.
But if it could.
Sure, if you can show that the septic did support it, then.
So the tie-in bond number is based upon maximum density, enough septic to support that level of density.
A viable.
Viable.
As their plan.
But my point was that they're, they, the scheme that they brought forth in June was the one that was looked at, and that's four plus five lots.
Right, the protest, the protest was for that.
Ten.
And to Victor's point, what we do not have an analysis of is the septic system on seven lots.
No.
Right, because why would we? You haven't proposed that, and, yeah, I get that, but like.
And he has not.
And you haven't done that analysis, right, so.
But to the point of the bedrooms, which I could, we could revise this per bedroom if they have demonstrated viability of 30 bedrooms.
Right.
Seven lots at a three-bedroom and a one-bedroom would be 28 bedrooms.
Right.
So it would be, again, roughly equivalent.
Right.
Again, we're working from a paper layout, we're just trying to get a sense of scale and intensity of use.
Right, it's a little back of the envelope until we actually have numbers. I get that.
Just, Lydia, that wasn't what my question was. I was just asking, the density of the proposal in June by the applicant, how does it compare to the current density in that region?
Right.
Oh, I still can't.
Well, there, yeah, and so the question that I don't know the answer to is in a If we are required, according to our zoning code, and this is a question that I need to figure out, to just abide by the zoning code, so in this case, minimum 8,000 square-foot lots, or if we have to abide not only by the zoning code, but also the general feel of the surrounding neighborhood? So whether we can put, not we, whether it is possible to put a, you know, a denser 1.4 acres amongst less dense, I don't know, half-acre lots, quarter-acre lots, whatever they are, I don't really answer that question.
Well, then that goes to the text of the code that says the compatibility with the neighborhood, blah, blah, blah.
Right, yeah.
So it's more like, that's the site plan review argument.
Right, and so like whether that's.
Analysis.
Yeah, so it's just sort of like, you know, whatever the planning board thinks.
I would just, and just to your point, Brand, though, I think we have to be a little bit careful because this wouldn't, if it was a straight subdivision, it would not be a site plan review, it would be a subdivision, and the applicants are entitled to what is the minimum required in that.
But they still have to do site plan review for the accessory dwellings if they, or if they converted to two units, yeah.
If they went down.
You're making, I'm just still on the density argument, like.
Sure.
Or the density analysis, like.
Right.
So if you want to make that density position, then yeah, you would have to go through site plan, a special permit, I believe.
And that accessory unit would have to come on from the board to be approved, the planning board to, part of that.
Well, and, not to add a little twist to this, but because the whole lot is in the historic district, then it's subject to site plan review by the planning board because it's in the historic district. So there's that, too.
To modify the existing building, I don't know that would apply for demolition. If it was just demolished and it was going to be a blank slate there.
You can.
I can find that question out. I don't believe that a demolition would require a site plan.
All new construction and major exterior additions to existing buildings shall require site plan approval.
Oh, you're looking at the.
Chapter 30, yeah, 12039, the historic district.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So because it's in the existing boundaries of the existing historic district, that's the topic for five minutes from now, it would have to go through site plan review. I have a completely separate question.
I just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no.
I still want to get back on Victor's question, because if the developer wanted to do seven lots, 8,000 square feet, that's within, single-family homes, that's within our code.
Yeah, our code minimum in the residential zone is 8,000 square feet.
I think it's, what's realistic is five or six maybe at the moment.
So I'm just saying what's in the code today.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
So there's code versus viability, basically.
But the viability is solely determined by the number of bedrooms and the septic viability.
Basically, the load that the.
So that's a common argument in zoning, is that you say, this is what it could look like. But you can't say this is what it could look like if you don't have Board of Health approval.
Correct, right, right.
That's my point.
Yeah, yeah.
I did have.
I'm sorry, Lydia, Lydia next.
No, so Brand had a question.
No, I just thought I saw some mistake in here, where you say the, or the report says, average household size is projected to shrink accordingly. Approximately 93% of all owner-occupied residential units in the village are three to four SFRs, with multifamily homes comprising 5.3% of the total. From the 1993 master plan, it's, it inventories the housing stock, and there's 115 three-or-four families and 288 five-plus families, which is about 30% of the 1,344 total.
I am not sure what the citation is for this, so I'll have to get back to you on that, Brand. I'm not sure about that.
And then Donna Warner last night said, she's checked 2,020 census data, and she says that 40% of the housing stock is two-plus units.
40%?
Which sounds about right. I mean, there are multi, we have tons of.
I mean, we've got multifamily housing.
Everywhere.
Sneaking around all over the place, including in the residential district.
Okay, I'll find out what the source was.
That, to me, is like a separate issue, but I'd really like to inventory, you know, part of this new process, not this process, but the planning, master plan process, inventory of these things.
Well, and that sort of actually speaks to my question, which is, they are beginning to inventory, they, not beginning, they have inventoried all of that, and for the most part, the multifamily units that we have in the village are not ADA compliant. I do not know the numbers, but for the most part, they're not ADA compliant in any way, which makes it very difficult, obviously, for elderly people to live here if they're not going to live in their home. And so what I, you know, this preliminary assessment kind of touches on it, but what I'm really curious about is, and I've been sort of watching the work of the Comprehensive Plan Committee as well on this, is how, you know, obviously, we want older folks to be able to age in place, but once their home kind of spins away from them, we want them to be able to at least age in the community where they. them to be able to at least age in the community where they live. And so the question, I guess, for this particular review is, it would be helpful if we had some ADA information. It's not, it sort of sideswipes it, but it doesn't sort of dig into it at all. I mean, we have the woods and that's kind of it.
Is Village Green ADA?
No, not even a little bit. Everything goes up or down from walking the door.
And the woods?
The woods, and some of Wells Manor is ADA, but not all of it and-
No, all of Wells Manor is HUD.
Yeah, but it's not all ADA, not all ADA. Yeah, because some of it's upstairs.
Well, that's true.
Yeah. And speaking as someone who's dealing with a mother-in-law who requires ADA housing, it's been exceptionally difficult to find it for her here, affordable or not, I mean, just like find it. So that would actually be super helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think what we're asking for is some more quantitative data.
Yeah, I think that's good, yeah, I appreciate that.
I would, I don't know if this is within scope, but it would also be really helpful to get some current data on, on affordable, on affordability in the village.
Sort of like cost burden and all the rest of it. I know the Housing Subcommittee was looking into that.
And I know it's hard to survey people and get the information out probably, right?
Census, Census has some of it.
Some of it.
I need to look, Donna Warner's been doing a great job with all the census data, I can sort of dig into that a little bit.
Anything else?
Yeah, one more, I had another question and that's on the last part. A zoning amendment will likely be needed to allow the adaptive reuse of the historic structure and if the zoning were amended to permit the use, we assume the approval would be by special permit. I know, I'm not sure I followed the special permit part.
So looking at your zoning table right now, you have, you know, either allowable special permit or not permitted, those are your three options.
Right.
And we made an assumption that because an ADU was by special permit, if you were going to allow multifamily, you might also have multifamily be by special permit. That gives the board, the planning board, more flexibility in the review rather than making it by rights. And again, I think I go back to the point at the outset, you know, if you make a zoning amendment to the R district, it applies to the whole R district, right? And so by making it a special permit process, it gives the planning board an additional level of control to gauge the particular characteristics and proposals that's being put forward on an individual basis rather than just sort of blanket saying we can have multifamily throughout the entire R district, which, you know, presumably would potentially be more impactful.
I'd say. If we're worried about 14 units instead of 13 units, or 12 units instead of 13 units, imagine all of the bigger houses turning into four units without any kind of oversight.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'd like to set the date to talk about this, I mean, because I do, and I did say this, and I want to continue to meet that, that we need to get public input in regard to this, you know, and have the planner here, because that's important, to make sure that the planner participates in that public comment section as well, so that there's an exchange of information. So I'd like to set that date. We have a couple proposals. One is fairly early, which would be September, which would be next Monday, the 26th, and then the other one would be the following Monday, October 3rd.
I can do either one.
Take your time. And we're talking about 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay. I can do either.
You can do.
I can do either.
On a calendar.
Yeah, I'll make myself available.
Lydia, you said either.
I can do either, if you want to.
Yeah.
Sorry, we're checking the-
Well, that's not very decisive, we need somebody to say I can't do one or the other.
No, I'm checking.
Yom Kippur begins sunset on October 4th.
Okay.
And Rosh Hashanah begins sunset on the 25th.
Yeah, the 4th was out.
Okay, 4th is out, and so 25th, okay.
And the 25th is a Sunday, so.
All right, 25th.
But it ends, I'm assuming at sunset on Monday, the 26th.
Some people do two days, but that's all right. But that should be all right.
I think, so my opinion is I'd rather allow more time than less time, to allow people, we can post this, we can get it out, we can get people to-
Yeah, the 26th seems very soon.
Yeah, to me, it's like-
I'm worried about this.
Monday, so I'd like to make a recommendation that we go to, I believe it is the 3rd, right?
Yep.
Did I quote it right?
Is that-
October 3rd.
That's not a holiday weekend, is it?
No, the next one is Columbus Day and then Yom Kippur is on the 4th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I make a motion to hold a public comment section, or a workshop, I should say, on October 3rd to address the public input on 6 Mulberry Street with the planner. I'd also like to add another section onto that, which is, I'd like to also have a discussion on historic preservation.
Yeah. Second?
Discussion.
Great.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 So done. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Randy.
Rick, we're ready to go. It's four minutes left, are you ready to go?
I think, yes, I think we have our, our crew has arrived.
Okay, crew has arrived. Montgomery Street Trees.
Okay. One moment. Okay. So as, again, let me do the thing here. Brandy keyed it first. Back to me, yeah. Put them off here.
Come back.
Oh, I just have to go.
Got to go left.
No, no, I need to be on that screen.
Yeah.
I can't.
Your mouse got to the left. There you go, go. There you go. Now you're on the left.
I can't see it.
It's up top.
Okay, thank you, there we go.
Down.
All right. That was unanticipated. You got it, Chris. All right.
Do you have that? Okay, good.
So I hope folks have noticed by now that along Route 9, there have been a series of signs, a series of trees that have been marked, and a series of flyers that have gone out. And this was all to alert folks that the Tree Commission is looking to do a removal and replacement program along Route 9. And this program has come about for a number of reasons, some of which I'd like to review here in this, in this slideshow. Okay, so basically, Ron Beck, we have a problem. We have that corridor of trees along Route 9, basically extending from the intersection by the hospital down to Chestnut Street, there are basically a corridor of Norway maples and those maples are not in good shape. And we have many problems. First of all, we have one kind of tree here, which means that they're all Norway maples except for one, which means that as things go wrong, they all go wrong at once. Thank you, Lydia. So that the stress that these trees are undergoing from climate change, they're all undergoing stress from climate change. These trees have all been pruned by Central Hudson. Basically, Central Hudson prunes to ensure that the power supply is stable. They did not prune to ensure that our trees remain in good health and these trees have grown up into the wires and been pruned back. These trees also suffer from ground problems at the ground level where they are either girdled by roots or confined by the sidewalk. And I'd like to draw your attention to a couple of items here. This is really kind of typical for one of the trees that's along the road there. You can see up to the left, there is a dead limb that is hanging over the road. In the center there, you have a burst of growth due to Central Hudson. So basically, what's happening here is Central Hudson comes by, they clear their, they clear the area around the tree, the tree is quite injured by this process and it sends out all kinds of growth. So when you see a big burst of growth like that, that's not a sign of a healthy tree, that's a sign of a tree that's struggling to survive. The other section that you can see on this slide, and you'll see some more, is that the tree is now really unbalanced. In this case, actually, it's leaning back off the property. But we have plenty of other places where the growth is unbalanced, hanging over the road, you can see there's another section where we have unhealthy growth, or we have dead limbs that are up there altogether. And this has just been an endemic problem that we've had for years and years and years along, along Route 9 and as the trees get stressed, as they get older, this problem only becomes worse and worse and worse. Here's just another example, this is another tree, if you take a look at it, you can see that there's already dieback up in the upper branches. This tree will not be with us for very much longer. I know from my own personal experience, we have, there were a pair of Norway maples around the corner from my house, they looked like that about two years ago, now they're completely dead. And you can also see there's an issue of safety, how about this, pretty illustrative, all of the tree is basically hanging out over Route 9 and at some point, we're going to get a good wind or a good storm and all of that is going to come over. That is, that is just not a healthy tree canopy or a safe tree canopy by any means. So basically, the Tree Commission got together and we put together a plan. Initially, in 19, excuse me, in 2019, there was a tree inventory and evaluation that was funded by the Frost Memorial Fund. And at that time, when they surveyed this area, they found 17 trees in poor condition and four in fair condition, and there's the listing of them to the side there. By our count now, 24 trees are in bad shape and should be removed. And part of the discrepancy is that the professional inventory was done back in really 2019, it's been three more years, three more years of stress, and just like the trees that are around the corner from me, some trees that looked okay three years ago have gone into serious decline. So we're talking about removing 24 trees and replanting with a total of 35 trees. And one of the keys to this replanning process is that there's going to be a mix of species and sizes and that's because we want to have some level of resiliency for our trees and our canopy. We can't have this, if you have a monoculture, as I said before, it is susceptible to dying all at once. And so we'd much rather have a variety of trees that will have different aging, different maturities, and also different times that they either flower or have their leaves change color. So basically, you'll have a longer period of time when the trees are attractive. Some may flower in the spring, some may give you fall color, so you may get a longer season rather than just having everything turn at all once. One of the real goals of the Tree Commission is to put the right tree in the right place because we've been fighting this power line problem for years and years and years, we've been fighting it everywhere. And so the answer, what you need to do is you need to put trees that fit under wires, underneath the electrical wires, and wherever you can plant a big tree, you plant a big tree. We want to exploit the spaces that we have, but we also want to be realistic about what we can do and what a viable canopy, urban forest looks like into the future. So this is very much a plan that is developed by volunteers looking for the future, trying to create a healthier urban forest here in Ronbeck. This effort is a combination, the Tree Commission is run completely by volunteers, we have volunteers who are planning to do planting on October 29th. Generally, we can plant the larger trees, excuse me, we can plant the smaller trees, the bare root trees, the larger trees or trees that are, have, are special, need to be professionally planted. And in this plan, there would be two, two rounds of professional planting, one would be in here this fall and one would be in the spring, and that's just dictated by the species of tree. Some trees cannot be planted in the fall, they have to be planted in the spring, spring for viability. So to this end, the Tree Commissioners have been out contacting all the property owners and received their approvals, and I'm just putting this slide up to be an illustration, that this is really a complicated process. There is finding the trees, understanding which trees need to come out, understanding where the viable spots to replace them are, understanding the proper tree that goes into the right place, talking to all of the homeowners, making sure that we can, we have the ability to go there, and then also finding out what's available at the nurseries. Some of this is always based upon what's available for sale at the various nurseries around here. I think there were several trees that we were looking for that wound up not being available. So this effort is the culmination of a lot of work by a group of volunteers. We've kicked around a number of ideas before, can we do this some other way, and the answer really we came down to was, this is the most time, cost, and energy effective solution that we have. So in talking to people, we've had several questions come up. So can the village bury the power lines? And the unfortunate answer is no, it's just simply cost prohibitive. At the last time, it was about five years ago.
When we did the water.
When we did the water project, there was a commission that, or a group of citizens that took a look at, would it be viable to bury the electric lines at the same time we were replacing the water lines? And the short answer is no, electricity and water don't mix. It turns out, basically, you'd have to have two trenches instead of one and the estimate to do this kind of work was in the millions of dollars. So as aesthetically appealing as that is and something that we'd all love to see, it's just not, it's just not financially viable.
The question was, would there be a cost savings in doing it simultaneously?
Right, there was no cost savings and the cost of it was in the millions of dollars to do, the cost of-
It was expensive.
It was expensive.
Like single millions, tons of millions?
Millions, millions, I'll give you, I'll give you 10 million, but more than two, less than seven, how's that?
I heard $500 a foot.
Wow, a foot?
I think it was actually higher, but-
Wow, well, either way, okay.
It was non-viable.
We have the report on file somewhere downstairs.
Exactly. So another thing that we've run into over the years is can we get Central Hudson to be a little, do a better job with their pruning? And we have literally chased Central Hudson crews up and down the street, negus, chased their arborist up and down the street, saying, hey, can you do a better job? The short answer is no.
Will they change crews?
Will they change crews, right, they didn't, crews and us. The short answer is no, they really have one goal and that is to ensure a steady power supply. And I don't know about you, when I moved here, it seemed like every time there was a bolt of lightning and a rumble of thunder, the power went out. Central Hudson's improved their reliability a lot, but the cost of that is basically that we have all of these trees that have been brutally, brutally pruned.
Rick, I want to add that, because it's not done arbitrarily, there is a spec that they have to go by.
It's like eight feet per, yeah, it's like a certain number of feet.
Ten.
Yes, they go by this, they go by a spec and that's the rule.
Yeah.
And that's been approved by the Public Service Commission.
And we have no latitude, basically, we have no latitude, there's no ability for us to influence this, even if somebody's on the ground with them saying, can you do this, can you do that? The answer is no.
We got one comment, public comment, basically saying that Central Hudson caused this problem, they should fix it. Is there any chance of that happening? I didn't answer this question, but-
No, I mean, pardon to answer, remember, this is their mandate from the state to ensure power delivery, so they, they would say, it's your fault for planting the wrong tree in the wrong place.
They offered the last time to remove all the trees and we said no.
We said no.
So one of the questions- Were we maples planted, sorry?
Fifty years?
Forty.
What do you think the, those-
All the Norway maples?
The Norway maples?
I guess, I haven't courted them, but my guess is they're probably about 50 years old. Fifty to 60.
And what's the lifespan?
Sorry, you do? Well, maybe no more because you've been here longer. I've been in that house for five, 48 years. I've been in that house for 50, 80 years, and I'm interested in it.
All right, so we can't have a public comment out here because it doesn't get picked up. If you want to speak, you've got to address yourself and speak, you know, okay? I'm sorry, but we've got to maintain some sort of control, otherwise, nobody can hear what you're saying. So thank you.
I think one of the important questions that's come up frequently, and that really needs to be addressed, is can you phase this program in over several years? And the answer from a practical point of view is, no, we really can't. We really can't do it. And there's several reasons why we can't do it. Some are physical. You can't put a new tree literally in the shade of an old tree. They will be competing for sunshine, for nutrients, and you'll be setting up your new tree for failure. We also have issues where if we have a new tree in, some of these trees are due to come out, they're due to fall down, they could be injured by a falling tree. And then the other point is, we have here a highly motivated set of volunteers to solve a problem that we've been kicking around in the village for a long time. Part of what goes into this effort is a lot of logistics. There's been a lot of literal shoe leather work by the members of the Tree Commission out knocking on doors, talking to people, understanding, helping them understand what this is all about, literally going door to door to talk to homeowners and property owners about getting permissioned care trees removed, and also having them agree to the type of species that we've planted. There's also a fair amount of permitting at the state level. We have people working on the state roads, so you have to get permits and all kinds of stuff like that. And it's really quite an undertaking. It's not as simple as cutting down a tree, digging a hole, and throwing another tree in the way. It's just, it doesn't, it might look like that, but there's actually a lot of work that goes behind it.
So, Rick, we're not removing trees if the homeowner said no?
Correct.
So we're only removing trees where a homeowner has approved?
That's correct.
That's correct. So one of the questions we also get is that there's a beautiful, that beautiful L.A. look, you know, if you're familiar with, sometimes in Europe where you have beautiful line, a set of trees going down a road, they're all the same, they're all spaced out at the same level. It's a great look. It's magnificent, and we all, it is a great look, I won't disagree. The problem is, that's really fallen out of favor with arborists and people who do this kind of planting. And again, that's the monoculture problem. If we're familiar, you know, we've had Dutch elm disease, we have chestnut blight, we have the woolly adulgid, which is attacking our hemlocks. So if you have one kind of tree, they're all susceptible to the same failure at the same time. And that's just not, we just can't take those kinds of chances anymore. You know, who would have thought that the American chestnut, which was one quarter of the trees in this part of the country, would disappear? So, Emmerl Lashbor is now here. So one of the things that we can do, though, if you can have a giant row of trees along a particular property, if it does, if it can be done, then there can be several trees of like kinds together, which will give you a little bit of that effect, a little bit of that grandeur effect, but it would not open you to the same exposure as if they're all the same. And then I'd also like to, I touched upon the fact that a greater variety of trees gives you greater interest throughout the year. And then I'd also like to touch upon the phrase that's come up to me frequently, which is that we have an urban forest. And we may not, we look at our trees as they provide shade, they're beautiful to look at. They're also a habitat for birds and other animals. And the more types of trees you can plant, the greater the variety of wildlife, the greater the variety of birds that they can support. So these trees are not simply there for us, they're actually also part of a larger ecosystem. And just as a, for instance, we received a grant to plant some trees down in the Legion Park, and we planted two holly trees, one of which is going to develop red berries. And those berries will become food for birds over the winter time. So this is a way that, in a time of increased stress for the trees and for the animals, we can attempt to provide some shelter and some more diversity, which is so important. So that's the end of my presentation. Meg, I'd ask you if you have anything you'd want to add?
If you do, please come on.
Come on, please.
Hi. I think you covered the points very well, Rick, but I just wanted to also say that we've been very lucky, both for the fall planting and our spring planting, to get very, very generous grant from the Frost Foundation, without which we would not be able to do this planting. And we can't do the planting without the removals, and they've agreed because they see these two corridors as being such important elements to our, coming into our towns, that they've agreed to pay for this. And also agreed to pay for larger trees. When Rick said we're planting large trees and smaller trees, the large trees he's talking about are trees that will mature to 50 or 70 feet or even taller as they age, the smaller trees being understory trees. But when we're putting in some of these larger trees, like oak trees, which get to be very, very big, and can age to 300 years, they take a little time to grow. So we're able to get those trees at a three-inch caliper instead of bare roots, say, when they would be smaller, because of the Frost Foundation grant. So we're lucky to have that, and I just want to thank them again. Shout out for that.
Meg, do we have a breakdown of the trees that are to be planted?
We do.
Do you have that?
We do have a list of the species.
Just sort of publicly, because you mentioned small and understory and large.
Right.
So to give people perspective and give us a perspective of what you're replanting.
So we are replanting.
We know what you're taking out.
Okay. So we will not be planting any Norway maples, we will not be planting any sugar maples, because both those trees are exhibiting a lot of stress from the heat that we've had the last two summers, a lot. I mean, I had one on my property, a sugar maple, a big, old, 100-year, 120-year-old tree. And last fall, it looked fine. This spring, it was dead. And as I go down, you know, our streets, and unfortunately, when we did this inventory, and I can't remember, Rick, you probably have that, but we had all, close to half of our tree population is maples. So we're trying to plant with other types of trees. So our taller trees, which will mature, are oaks, two types of oaks, red and pin oak. We're also planting plane tree, we're also planting a catalpa tree, we're also planting tulip trees, native trees. Those are our big trees that we're planting. And then, and zelkova, sorry, and honey locusts. So those six different types of trees are the bigger trees. We're planting cherry trees, crabapple trees, and hawthorn trees as understory trees this year. Those are the ones that will go under the wires. And yellowwood, which is a medium-sized tree, also blooms, but it will be not under the wires, it gets too big to be under the wires, but it can go in a smaller space than a very big lawn. So we've also been fortunate, because on Montgomery Street, at least on the west side, there are a lot of big lawns. So, and right now, they don't have anything on them. So we are fortunate to be able to plant in those lawns some of these bigger trees.
So on the other side of the sidewalk, basically?
On the property side of the sidewalk.
Got it. And so that's where obviously the top-story trees would be going.
Right. And also, we're planting some of the taller ones on the east side, because there are no wires there.
On the right of way?
In the right of way. In the median.
We need to, now you've become a connoisseur of wires. The high, thin wires are the electric wires, and those are the ones that get pruned around. The lower, thicker ones?
Yeah.
Those are the cable and other utility wires. They don't care.
Yeah, I've got a bunch of those going through some.
And also, we will be planting locusts there. The structure of a tree also affects how it's pruned, and how badly it's affected by pruning, when it's cut. So in the village, we have all those honey locusts and.
In the downtown area?
In the downtown area.
Yeah.
The advantage of them is that they have a very irregular kind of branching. So when the center is cut out of them, you're not cutting the main leader like you are with a maple tree.
Got it.
So they fare a little better, they'll fare a little better with telephone wires and internet wires that they're going to have to go around on that side of the street than a maple would, for instance.
So, Meg, one of the questions that has come up a lot in the email traffic is, they're not all dead.
That is true. They're not all dead. They're dying.
So they're not all dead?
No, they're not all dead.
So why remove the non-dead ones?
Because they're very hazardous. The pictures that Rick was showing you show you that after they've been pruned, you know, it's forcing their growth to go way out over that street or way out over the sidewalk, and it unbalances the tree dramatically. So if you have an ice storm or something like that, and the load is all on one side and in heavily trafficked areas like this, it could just fall over. We had one on Chestnut Street, out of the blue, break off about a month and a half ago, a maple tree.
It's split, right?
It's split, yeah.
There was another comment that you have to do it now because the Frost Foundation is addicted to, has spent the money now. Is there a timeframe on the donation?
Yes. They usually expect, they expect us to do it through the next spring season of planting.
Just for plantings, though?
Right. Right.
Right. Well, the whole grant.
No, the whole grant covers removal and the planting.
We can't plant without removing.
Yes, yes, that's what it's for.
So I think one of the, I think I started this off by saying, I put the signs out there, Meg, banned the trees, and hung some of the flyers on there. And I did talk with people as I was putting the signs out and chat with them. And it was a hot day, and I really appreciated having the trees and the leaves there. And I know that that's, and many people do. And I love, I joined the, wanted to be the liaison of the Tree Commission, because I think that we have to create a walkable and sustainable village. And one of the ways we do that is by having shade trees over our sidewalks and over our roads. I, and the Tree Commission came to the conclusion that this is really the necessary thing to do to move into the future. And we've done it over here on East Market Street. I think it's gone, it's gone pretty well. I look at the young trees, and I think about, well, this is something that we are giving for the future residents of the village. Once again, it was a set of kind of old maples that were barely hanging on. We have some smaller trees. Over the years, we'll see them grow, and they will be here for people who are beyond us. And to me, I'm quite proud of that, of that function.
Finances aside, and this is not, you know, obviously, we have to consider finances, but finances aside, is it at all practical to take out the half that are the most dangerous, you know, now plant near or around or wherever they were, and then next year, take out the next, just to sort of make it a little less dramatic? Is that something that makes sense?
The problem is, Lydia, I couldn't tell you which of those trees might or might come down. I think it's, excuse the expression, a crapshoot.
Got it. So there's like, wow.
I mean, I didn't linger on the slide when we had it up there, but.
I mean, I'll just, there are places where we can plant in the brow that wouldn't be affected by the trees that we leave.
Right.
But those trees are still hazardous.
Right.
So anecdotally, the sugar maples and the silver maples shed, and they've been a big problem. I have groves of Norway maples. I can't cut the brush enough to keep them down, but they're sturdy as heck. I mean, I don't see a problem with branches falling, this and that and the other thing. It's anecdotal, but it's my anecdote.
They're pruned by Central Hudson?
No. You know, I think, Brad, to respond to the anecdotal, one of the things that we have here is that it's a much more stressful environment, that, you know, you have heat island effects from the road, you have some pollution, it's drier, the root structures are compromised. I think it's one thing to say, hey, this tree can grow fine, undisturbed, but the trees that we have here are all in difficult circumstances. And I know, I know when I moved here, there was a line of trees down Chestnut Street. They all fell down at the time I was there. The rest are about to fall down.
It's going to be so shocking.
It's going to be shocking. It's going to be shocking, but I think what the Tree Commission is asking is for people's forbearance, because we need, this is the time and the chance that we have to put this together, to do it, and to grow and to start growing into the future. So even though it's a shock, I would hope that people can look at the trees and see that there's something that's coming for the future.
Well, it's not a zero-sum game. I mean, you didn't, I know that's not ideal, but in my experience, smaller trees, they don't like direct sunlight. So I don't, I can't see if you have a replacement tree.
What do you mean?
I have a hard time growing saplings in direct sunlight. They like to be underneath some kind of a cover.
No, that's not true. Depends on the kind of tree.
My red buds are.
Well, the red buds are shade-loving trees.
Okay. I'm not going to win a discussion if you guys have already made a comment. This is what we do all the time here. We bring in an expert and then.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think that's another, but I think what Meg's.
We have a lot of pitch people here.
A lot of thought, a lot of thought has gone into the trees that are to be planted. And as I said, it's not as simple as just going, oh, let's put a tree here, let's put a tree there. There's a lot, a lot of thought that goes into this.
So, Rick, I'd like to take a public comment, if you don't mind. Is that okay?
Go right ahead.
All right. So I'd like to take a public comment on this. If you want to speak, come up, identify yourself, and tell us your thoughts. You're limited to three minutes or less. Yes, please.
Cecily Fraser, a 50-year veteran of life in Rhinebeck. And I just wanted to say, for the people thinking that we just need to keep these trees, one of the functions these trees perform, the new trees, is to take carbon dioxide out of the air. The tree that does that best is a very large tree. The sooner you start to plant those trees, the more oxygen they take out of the air. The trees here are struggling to survive. They're not doing the job of a large oak, for instance, would be doing in the future. So I think you should plant now, because the sooner we plant, the sooner we get those benefits, and we really need those benefits. And I think you've done, Meg and all of you have done a great job on planning this all out, and I trust them very well, very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? We're a safe group, don't worry. We don't throw barbs.
My name is Cynthia Fennell. I'm also a full year resident of Rhinebeck. I came here initially thinking, oh, no, they're going to take down all the trees. But you have absolutely convinced me that it makes absolute sense. It will be painful initially, but we do have to think about the future. And if these trees are unsafe, it makes no sense to, you know, delay the pain. I think you're right. They need to come down, and we need to start over. We have so many trees. We have just an acre on Montgomery Street. We have. We have, we've been nursing these trees for 45 years plus. And we are, we don't have any control. You know, it's out of our control. It's very sad, but we can't, we can't keep this up. And we have an opportunity to replace them. I think we just have to bite the bullet and do it.
I so appreciate your emotion about this.
I mean, I'll say this...
It's heartbreaking.
It is. And all the Tree Commissioners, we all, we're all in the Commission because we love trees, and we want to see them grow and thrive. And it's not, this is not an easy decision. There are many times, or sometimes, that applications come for tree removal sometimes on another place. And we're like, well, can it be pruned? Can we do something? The goal is to plant and to save as many trees as we can. But thank you for your words. We're sort of at this junction right now, and it's time to move forward.
Yeah, I get that.
I'm Marion Callahan, and I walk every day in the village. For the last 40 years, I have watched Central Hudson ruin the trees. And, but I also heard that the village gets a lot of money from Central Hudson for the airspace. Why don't we use some of that money, take down the branches, particularly the ones that hang over the road? That is an accident to happen any day now.
We don't get any money from Central Hudson.
I was told to me by somebody who worked...
I wish we did. We paid them a lot of money.
To save...
I could show you our Central Hudson bills.
And anyway, if we could just cut down all the really bad branches and start planting trees. There are a lot of places where there are no trees along the route from the hospital up to the traffic light. And I don't know, if you people walk, it makes such a difference, and it will make a difference because all the cars go by. And if you have no shade on the sidewalks or on the road, you do not cut down the heat of the sunshine, which is, as a people, they plant trees because that's what we need. So, whatever it needs.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
I have one more question. I don't know if this is for Rick or for Meg, the tree expert. But how, I know that we're buying or we're acquiring bigger versions of the bigger trees in order to get that going quickly. How long do you expect it to take to have any kind of shade on the sidewalk where the maples are gonna be removed? As you're scrying into the future?
I would just say that you should look, for instance...
In front of Lutheran Church? I mean, yeah.
On, along the cemetery, for instance. Those plane trees that were planted there. Those provide quite a lot of shade, you know, where they're planted. I'm just saying that because that's a very public place that you could think. Those trees were planted eight years ago, nine years ago. So, that's the size. And the trees that we planted at Star Library, down that alley of maple trees. It's a different kind of maple than a Norway maple. It is a little more adaptable to the climate. But those trees have only been in, I think, five years, maybe six years. So, a lot of the trees we're planting grow quite quickly. The oak trees that we're planting are probably the slowest-growing trees, but they are also...
The longest-lived.
The longest-living.
Yeah.
So, you know, we do need some patience here. And they will probably do have some larger oaks in town. We have the oats that are at the leisure park in the front. But they've been in probably 15 years. So, you know, to get to that size, they took longer than...
Than some of the other fast ones. Okay, thank you.
Do you remember when the Kentucky coffee tree went in on Chestnut Street in between...
What Chestnut?
No, no, on regular Chestnut Street, regular Chestnut.
East Chestnut?
Between, yeah, between mulberry...
Oh, I know that tree.
And parsonage.
Did lose, that lost a leaf.
It lost a leaf, but how old is that tree?
I think we put that in about seven years ago, eight years ago.
Oh, okay, okay. Because I was gonna say, I know that I walk that stretch of Chestnut Street all the time.
Right.
And I says, when I first moved here, there were, it was a tremendous line of big trees. And one came down, I think one hit somebody's house twice, when two trees fell on them, started a fire. And I know that now, I'm not sure like which species are there now, but already the trees that are along the street there are enough to make walking on the sidewalk, on the sidewalk comfortable again. I'd like to see the, I mean, I'd love to see them extended.
Right.
But as somebody who's, you know, walks, you know, loves to walk in the village, I can say, yeah, there was a year or two when I'd say it was, it was less than I really wanted.
Less than ideal.
Less than ideal, but at this point, it's really, it's good, and you can really see the growth.
Okay.
So, that's my own experience.
So, just so everybody knows, we are a tree city. We're 11 years now, running as a tree city, which is not an insignificant thing. There's criteria that needs to be met for us to meet the tree city status and get the recognition of being a tree city here in the United States. So, our Tree Commission, who has been running diligently, we need to thank for 11 years of being able to help us manage that evergreen. Okay, tough time.
Indeed.
Time, all right, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the proposal as presented by the Tree Commission to change the environment.
I know, it's heartbreaking.
It's hard, it's hard, it's hard.
To remove 26 trees, 25 trees, and plant them with 30...
35.
With 35 trees, right, this fall.
Correct, in spring, five in the spring.
Pardon?
Five in the spring.
Oh, five in the spring, okay.
Second.
All right, second. Discussion.
I just wanna say, I really respect the work of the Tree Commission. And I've, I know how hard you work, and I know the expertise. And I, I know it is heartbreaking to talk about chopping down all these trees, but I'm thinking about the future. And I think this is a really well-considered plan.
All right, time for a vote.
Just so you know, I'm gonna vote no, because I think there was a different way to do this than all at once.
That's fine. You're entitled to your vote. Vanessa?
Darn too.
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Lydia, you ready?
Yes. Aye. Is there a question? No, no question. Sorry. Go on, go on.
Okay, all right.
Did you vote?
Not yet. I'm gonna do it right now.
Okay.
Yeah. I think you all saw the motion, and you feel the motion, and you understand where we are. And as hard as this is, and as much as I love the visual aspect that we get from coming into the Village of Rhinebeck, and I've loved it since the day I came here 30 years ago, we need to think of the future. And we need to plan for the future, and that's what this Village Board needs to do, is put in plans to take us to the future. And so, my vote is yes.
I'd like to do something. I don't know what. I'll come up with something. But I'd like to acknowledge these trees in some way.
I don't know. How about a portrait?
Yeah.
I always thought a picture of that coming in was just a stunning view.
Yeah.
If we could do that somehow. You haven't voted yet.
Oh, I did, sorry. I thought I did vote. Aye.
Aye. All right. Vote is cast. We're gonna move forward. I believe we do, we put out an RFP in anticipation of knowing what to do. Rick, could you, you have the RFP, so that's, you can have that?
Sir.
And then, whatever bids came in.
Okay.
Mary, I just wanna say one thing. I do make a motion that Rick has the best hair.
I grew up myself.
Jealous.
So, just so folks know what's going on, because we're on a somewhat tight timetable here, the village did put out a bid for the tree removals. It was only to be awarded pending the outcome of this vote. So, that's what you're seeing. And basically, this is for the removal of the 25 trees. And as Meg pointed out, there's actually three on East Market Street here that are part of that, so it's 22.
That are included in that.
That are included in that package. So, it's three less on Route 9. So, the bid is to cut down the trees, remove the wood, grind the stumps, and basically have that ground ready so that we can replant near, in the same zone.
Who are you planting?
What?
When?
First, the volunteers will be planting on the weekend of the 29th. The larger trees, and please come and join us. We had a wonderful turnout for the spring's planting. The larger, the bald and burlap trees, we'll be going out and purchasing, and they'll be replanted. They'll be planted sometime later in the fall. And then, there'll be five that are scheduled for the spring. I think that includes it evergreen? No, no more, okay, no evergreen. Evergreen's gonna only be planted in the spring.
Evergreen should not be planted along the street.
Along the street, okay. So, for our RFP, we did receive one bid. Unfortunately, we had Martina put it out to several people. And that was from Dave's Tree Service, is to take down and remove the trees, grind the stumps. There are actually two old stumps that are in the ground, too. So, those are gonna get ground and taken out. And there are two additional trees that are gonna be pruned on East Market Street. So, that was for a total of $9,475. So, I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid from Dave's Tree Service for $9,475 for this tree work.
Can I get them to give you that rate?
I know, right?
Right?
That's unbelievable.
I know, can they come to my house after that?
Call them.
Dave's is, we...
They're very good partners of the village.
They've been very good partners of the village.
Very good partners of the village.
And it's, you know, it's open bidding.
I just have a question. Is this covered with the grant?
Yes.
So, that was my question. The grant was for how much?
The grant is for $35,000.
I'm sorry, we should have a second to the motion first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. The grant is for $35,000. We actually were so thrifty, the first time around, we have $13,000 left over from our initial grant. We are anticipating that, well, this bid came in more than the other bids came in. We're anticipating this work's gonna be more expensive. So, between the 13 that we have in the bank and the 35 that we have requested, we should be able to cover all this. And the planting of the trees is expensive, too.
So, it's roughly 10 to remove, and then the additional one you would be for purchasing?
For purchasing and planting.
And planting, correct.
Because some of them, we can't plant. They're the big burlap ones.
Correct, correct.
And we don't know, we don't have a bid for that?
No, we have to go out and get those.
We have to get a bid for that.
We got one just came in today.
You have the trees. We have located the trees.
Right. But to do the planting, we don't have a bid for that yet. And we need to do an RFP for that.
Right.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure before we move forward. All right, any other discussion?
I would like to vote for that bid, but since I voted no, I'm gonna vote, it's such a good deal, though.
I think you could vote for the bid, even though you lost the vote.
Do we have a parliamentarian?
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You know, I'm sorry, I wanted to ask one more thing. When are they coming down?
We will be working that out with Dave's, but it's sometime before, before the 29th. What has to happen is the trees need to come out. We'll schedule it with Dave. Then, we have to mark out the places where the new trees are going in. So, then, we call New York State, Dig Safe, so we can make sure that we're not...
Before the 29th of September?
No, of October, of October, of October. And then, we, so we have to have the space open so we can get Dig Safe in there to make sure that we're not interfering with anything underground.
I would just like to make it as late as possible.
Has DOT approved the...
Yes, yes. We've got the, I brought that down. There's, we work with a man named Joseph Taylor down at DOT. And they have a commission or a committee that actually looks at the kinds of trees that you're planting to see that they are compatible. And so far, they've loved our work.
All right, I'd like to thank your patience for this. I'm sorry that we took up so much time, but this is, again, one of the most important things in the village amongst many things. And so, I appreciate your due diligence and your time dedicated to this. And thank you for the Tree Commission for all your work. Okay, moving on. Brandy and Dan?
Oh, turn TV back on.
You're up. All right, so, just to remind everybody, this year, we applied for and received two grants. One was a community development block grant, which needed to be put towards either ADA kind of improvements or into a special district that met the zoning requirements or the property value requirements for this. And that was for $100,000, which we received from the county. The next was a municipal innovation grant. I'm sorry, everybody's leaving. We're talking about receiving money.
What about the sewer report?
Yeah.
Do you wanna know how we're spending our funds?
All right, so we got, we also got a municipal innovation grant from the county for $147,500. It's really, that was for improving sidewalks around Village Hall, apron into the Village Hall, et cetera. And what we asked Time Bond, our engineers, to do is, if possible, to merge these two brands, two together, since they're kind of related into the same area, and get, and go out for bid as one package.
Yes, that is correct. You summarized my whole reason.
Sorry.
I'll have your slides up in a minute here.
No, that's exactly right. We did contact the county, the municipal improvement grant and the CDBG. They do have different administrative requirements. So, there's, Karen and I will get super close trying to sort out the bids just to make sure we can submit for reimbursement properly. But because the scope of both projects has to do with concrete flatwork, sidewalks, ramps, accessibility ramps, things like that, it does make sense to combine them into a single bid project. We'll have to do some careful construction document development just to make sure we can keep the accounting straight for the county. But the county was open to having this be combined as a single project. And I think that that will provide a level of efficiency for the village and get a little more bang for your buck for those grants, so, yeah.
Time frame?
Time...
What do we have to do? What's next?
So, I provided the village a task order to get started with our services and kind of outline that process. The first item that needs to be completed is some additional survey work. I wish I would've known you guys were gonna get this grant when we had Control Point out during Center Street. But a lot of this work continues down East Market Street. It will include some of the area in front of the municipal parking, as well as the sidewalk that begins on the west side of the firehouse. So, we need to have the surveyor come and pick that up. We are fortunate that they did get all of the area on Center Street that is subject to this grant. So, they need to just come back and do that additional survey work. So, that's the first step. And then, after that, we will put plans together for the sidewalk, curb ramp, and... And then after that, we will put plans together for the sidewalk curb ramp and building ramp improvements. And we anticipate that the survey will take about three weeks from authorization. And our goal would be to meet with you guys about a month later, to go through the preliminary plans, and have a set of plans, because all this work is in the DOT right away. So, go to our friend Joseph Taylor and get preliminary approval for the work. It's maintenance work, so it shouldn't be particularly controversial, but it is nonutility work in the right of way. And then propose to have plans that could go to Dutchess County at the beginning of January. The county does need to review the plans because of CDBG funding, and they have specific front-end specification requirements that need to be met. And then advertise for bid in mid-January with the intent to have a spring construction start. So, anticipate April construction start there. With, it's a small project, so we'd like to see that it could be closed out before Memorial Day, and then the paperwork closed out in June.
We might have it on the display by Memorial Day.
Oh, that's actually, Dan will talk to you about that, yeah. But it's kind of all in the same area. So, you know, I think the level of communication you've done on the trees will want to do something similar in terms of communication with the community about what Center Street and East Market Street might look like.
So, I don't want people to confuse this with the Center Street project.
Correct.
This is separate from the Center Street project. So, what you have on the screen is not applicable to this.
That's right. He's not.
I worked so hard to get it.
You can keep it there if you want, but just, I want everybody to know that's not part of this discussion.
So, is this?
There's two brands.
I can run through the scope of this real quickly again. Sure. So, the CDBG grant covers ADA improvements and.
Side blocks.
For the curb ramps at Center Street and East Market Street. So, that's where the curb goes down to the roadway.
Yep.
And also for the approaches for the sidewalk and the sidewalk crossing, the driveway entrances for the municipal parking lot that's on the north side. So, that's six total curb ramps.
Okay.
Was there one, seven total? Wasn't the other one over on Livingston?
Well, if we have enough money, we'll bid it as like a per curb ramp.
Okay.
But if we have enough money, we would like to do Garden Street as well.
That's wrong. That's wrong.
And then West Market Street. That one is particularly bad. And we are intimately familiar with it because we cross it. They're all. So, that's what would be covered under the CDBG. The MIG grant will cover sidewalks that begin on the west side of the fire station and wrap around to Center Street and go to the police station.
Okay.
And new ADA ramp for Village Hall, because it's constantly separating from the building and heaving.
Okay.
And there are some very heavy-duty sidewalks that has to be installed across the apron for the firehouse, because the trucks come in, they, you know, they land there, but they're going in and out there, and that's gotten quite broken up. But that's like a much sturdier sidewalk than normal.
Just, everybody know, in that MIG grant was also equipment for the firehouse.
Yeah.
Which is part of that outside of the construction project, which the firehouse is going for, which included a UTV, a washer dryer, you know, and.
Oh, yeah. We've had stuff from like six months ago.
Yeah. So, that was all encompassed into the MIG grant.
Yep.
In package with the sidewalk improvements.
Yep.
I have one question about the entrance, like the ramp up into Village Hall. Does that include the railings or?
Yeah.
So, a whole new design there?
I think we need to rethink what's happening there. And I'm not 100% sure yet what it will look like. But, you know, it may be a slight configuration change. But the current ramp is like a monolith of concrete that just comes up to a landing and then you go into the building. And that triangular monolith has that history of like heaving and moving. And so, there's very often much more than a quarter inch drop. And I know DPW works really hard to keep it, you know, spackled. But it just, you know, they'll break again this winter.
Yeah. I was recently in the basement doing the walkthrough for the flex teckulat hall study. And we noticed that there's some rust coming in at a certain spot. And you look up at the seam between.
Ground level, basically.
Okay.
And I wonder if there's something going on there at the front entranceway. And I'm just worried that we're going to, we're going to take that apart and see that there's.
Never renovate, because once you take it apart, everything shows off.
You are a mortarist.
So, I don't know.
You did a tank there a number of years ago, didn't you? That was.
We did. So, one couple years. We removed the buried oil tank where the table is at currently, right now.
So, I don't, maybe there's something that happened there. I mean, part of what causes the heaving is that moisture gets in there again, and it freezes and expands. So, that's why we just, we need to.
Is there like, could there be like a sill plate there made out of steel or something?
There, yeah. There could be a number of different things. You know, we were even just thinking around internally, like, do we change the pitch of it so that it's, you know, it looks like it's just holding water in that area?
Something's causing it to heat.
Yeah.
Whether it's water or whatever.
Something under heat. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure.
I have, can I just, one kind of one if, and I don't know if this is possible. Right now, we have a bike rack that's stuck up against the railing there, basically. Would it be possible to include a slightly better space for bicycle parking as part of that, if you're doing the apron and the rack there and stuff like that?
Yeah. So, to get a little finer point on the layout, so what we'd like you to do is provide a true handicap parking space in front of Village Hall that's demarcated properly and has the proper transition from the roadway up to the sidewalk, and then from the sidewalk up to Village Hall. So, kind of that whole, let's call it like the front entry plaza and on-street parking would be encompassed in the scope of work for the improvement. Because right now, you don't have a good ADA accessible means of getting from your car. The concrete is all broken up there. The curb is all broken up. Sidewalk's all broken up, so.
Brandy, does any of this work interfere with the proposed work on Center Street?
There will be some coordination that needs to happen, probably a timing of paving.
Curbs, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you're talking about $250,000 approximately?
The budget we had put together previously was from some quotes that we got from vendors that do concrete flatwork. That's the bulk of what this project is. And that gave us a budget of about $100,000. And I believe it was $140,000 or $150,000.
So, I don't think Grant remembers that we, when we approved these, both these, we are giving, taking 10% on each one of them, coming out of our capital funds to help do this. So, that's what was approved when we submitted the application.
No, I don't remember that.
We had to match with 10%.
Yes. So, we have a 10% on each one of these going forward. Some comes out of fires and some comes out of the village capital fund.
So, what is your task order amount?
The task order amount is $35,000. And that's inclusive of the grant funds. So, the grants do allow the funds to be used in part for professional services.
So, $35,000 on the RN.
It would be reimbursable through the grant.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah.
And then we're just 10% of whatever the total is.
Correct.
Do you want to approve the task order then?
I'm, yes, that's what's on the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
Any other questions while we were in that mode? I'd like to make a motion to approve task order number 2022, number 32, for Ty and Bond to start the process for the CBG and MIG grant.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Don't leave.
You're going right away?
No, don't leave unless Dan's going to. Okay. Next on the agenda is Center Street.
Okay.
Thank you, Brandy.
Long meeting already, so I won't be belaboring the point. But we're talking about the replacement or addition of water main along Center Street between Livingston and south. And addition, looking at at the same time ripping up the road, improving the drainage situation there. Rick, if you want to just flip to the next couple slides.
Sure, okay.
For plans. So, currently for, keep going.
Yep.
So, it's a small picture. You can kind of see there, that's not helping anybody with that. It's okay. The green is the existing drainage facility, which is a 12-inch to an 18-inch. And then that lets us a 24-inch to the Landsman Kill. That's in green. The drainage, these drainage facilities. There is not a per se water main along Center Street. There are very long surfaces. And those are generally two inches or smaller. There's been some condition issues with those surfaces, most recently with the village service breaking the blue last connector and causing that damage out there on Center Street. Maybe you can go to the next page, the next one. So, in general, we'll be picking up, the plan is to pick up from Livingston, where there was a stub left for the last water main improvement project, running towards East Market Street, crossing East Market Street towards south, and connecting where there was another stub left out on South Street. The proposal for the drainage improvement is to replace that with a larger capacity pipe, 24-inch and ultimately 36-inch pipe. We did do a drainage evaluation of the existing system. It's a relatively large watershed, almost reaching up to plat. And what we determined from that evaluation is that at the one-year storm, or, you know, generally, you would expect that storm to happen once every year, there was failures of the system, surcharging. It's extremely flat pipe. There's not a great deal of inlet into the drainage system, meaning that you have ponding of the surface area. And so, we use that drainage model to design our proposed drainage improvements along the same corridor. The water line is supposed to be an eight-inch line with surface reconnections for all the houses and buildings along the way. So, that's the general summary.
So, you don't show that the drainage going down.
Is that the next page?
Yeah, if you want to do the next one, yeah.
Because it's got to go all the way to the creek.
Right. So, you know, generally, we'd like to improve from the downstream up. If we do upsize the section just in Center Street and not make that improvement, you can go to the next one. It continues on. And then the next one. That's the ultimate discharge to the Landsman Kill. So, if you don't improve from the downstream up, potentially, you're passing that flooding problem maybe to South Street, because you're going to send a larger diameter pipe into a smaller one, and so.
Yeah, I actually put my tape measure in that, the end where Center Street hits south, and it looked like 12 to 15 inches. So, I figured, wow, we upsize it to here, then we're just going to flood that area.
So, we've got to go all the way down.
If you didn't continue down the Landsman Kill. Yeah, right.
Yes.
There's some odd and deteriorating condition of that drainage infrastructure, both the structures and the pipe. There's a lot of what we call blind connections, where there's not a structure that you can see the pipe coming in. That's a challenge for maintaining those pieces of catch basins that come into the main trunk line, where you can't easily clean those out. They get sediment to clog them up. So, taking a small pipe and reducing the capacity further. So, it's something that would improve the drainage facilities throughout this area and beyond.
So, Dan, several years ago, in this picture right there, almost just in the property line where this pipe collapsed, and we had to do a rebuild of the pipe.
Where?
Because of the collapse. I wish Victor was still here, because it was on Victor's property. And at that time, we, it was determined we didn't have an easement there. So, I just want to make sure that the board is aware that in order to do this and do that change, we need to get now these easements in place on those properties for the drainage.
We didn't have an easement?
What?
We did not have an easement?
We did not have an easement in place. No.
And so, if I can just add, I will not dissuade you from seeking an easement, because that makes it crystal clear. But, and Grant, you probably know more about this than I do, and I'm not an attorney, so we'll just start with that. But municipalities have a right to maintain scriptively.
Which is what we did.
The infrastructure that they install. So, I don't want anybody to think you have management on it for us.
We have some kind of privilege.
Yeah, which is what we did before. That's why we were able to repair it and do it, because we have the right of way into there according to legal. But the best recommendation is still to get the easement, which was recommended by our attorney back when we had this problem. And it just fell off the list.
Is that long rectangular part, is that the Britons?
This right here?
Yes.
It's that long, huh?
That whole property?
Yeah, it goes all the way down to the lake.
And that's their neighbor, right?
And that's the Nelson's. It's the Nelson's next door.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
And that's vacant, right, Gary?
No. Well.
The one next door?
No. There's, next door to the Britons is Nelson. And then next door to that is a larger space.
It's the vacant.
Yeah. And so, the drainage actually enters into this wood line that's there.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, there's a house behind, yeah.
And it goes into that wood line.
Correct.
And then it goes at the diagonal across the property and into the Landsman Kill.
So, just a couple things, and this is just for us. The first leg from the street to the, is that cleanup basin? Yeah, here. This leg? Whose property is this, over here?
That's $26,000. I'm sure the property.
So, I think that's the Nelson's.
Nelson's, okay. And then I see that actually what you're doing is you are rerouting the pipe. So, actually, you're going to, we're going to abandon the existing pipe and then.
Yeah, in general, this is.
We dig the whole thing.
Yeah, in general, this is in approximately the same alignment as the other pipe. However, here, there's a lot of built-up landscaping and some large diameter trees. So, what we're proposing here is to kind of cut the corner a little bit to stay away from the large trees and the landscaping and kind of make a straighter path with less bends as well. So, it's close, but it's a slightly different alignment.
Speaking of saving trees.
Right. We'll need to restore the property.
Absolutely. I don't think I can handle losing any more of that.
So, you actually went and looked at their yard, or you're just using satellite imagery, or?
Well, we had a survey, but then also looked at the yard, yeah.
Okay.
And at the time, just seeing, this was years ago, pre-people, pre-dominant enforcement officer, you know, DPW.
Wild, wild west times.
Yeah. So, it just was approved by the landowners to do the easement and make this official to do it. But we'll have to go back through that exercise.
Yeah.
So, I just want to turn to the, just return to the water main section. So, initially, we had hoped that we were not going to have to create a new water line down Center Street. But what you're saying is it's just a little service lines, and that needs, so it needs a whole new line. That was the.
Between Livingston and East Market, was that the conversation?
Right.
Between Livingston and Market, we could, everyone has a copper feed. There's like three or four homes in there.
Okay.
And they're actually coming off of Livingston, the line on Livingston.
Yeah, but they do have copper mains.
Yeah, there are coppers coming off of Livingston.
So, they have long runs.
Like multiple service lines.
Long runs down Center Street.
Gotcha, okay.
Off the main going up Livingston.
And then how is the.
Could we harvest that copper and sell it for stuff?
And then how, and then how is the, how is like the police station and then the, where is the water for like Village Hall coming from?
From the front porch.
From Center Street.
Center Street.
I thought it's coming up East Market.
Well, the meters, the meters in the front of the building.
That's true.
But are we on one of those copper mains or on something else completely?
So, then once again, we're on like service lines coming off.
No, no. We're on that two-inch cruddy one that we.
But where does that two-inch go?
It goes down Center Street.
It does like more.
So, the main is East Market Street, and then there's a service line coming off of it.
So, the water's flowing up.
Well, there's.
No.
I know the one that. It comes down here and does like five houses or something, and then there's, I don't, it doesn't go all the way down then, right?
No, the other ones are served off East Market, like the ones that had frontage on East Market are served off of East Market. But if you want to go to the next slide, that's the police station that we're talking about.
And those are all coming off of East Market?
They are coming off of East Market, yeah.
And then.
Down to South Street, those with frontage there from off South Street.
So, basically, instead of just having a whole bunch of service lines, we're going to put in an actual main?
An actual main.
And then.
So, that improves water quality by looping, improves pressure, better for firefighting and protection. So, it's certainly an improvement overall as well, not just.
And you're going to, I'm sorry, and you're going to tie into the main that's underneath South Street?
Yes.
We're going to connect south.
So, it's not blind. The problem is that was blind.
It's currently dead end.
Currently dead end, which is bad.
So, we're basically connecting south to Livingston.
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
Do you leave all the little service copper lines just for redundancy?
You can leave them.
We'll pick them up, you know, add like the curb line. We'll pick up the existing ones that go to the houses.
Just like we did when we did the water main, same thing.
So, you reconnect them.
You go to the curb, you know, the curb box, it's got the valve. You put the key in there and you turn the valve on. It says water.
Yeah, where those like little like, the blue things are.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll connect to that.
So those all will be reconnected.
So the, we're improving the, we're like rightsizing all the drainage, right?
That's correct.
And then is there any way to try to infiltrate the water along the way a bit more underground? So it's not just shooting straight out into the Landsman Kill?
Yeah, I mean, that was something that was discussed, certainly adding tree planters or things like that that can infiltrate water, I think, given the budgetary constraints. At this point, that wasn't considered.
I thought there was catch, we were talking about catch basins as well to help take away some of the?
That's a possibility. Certainly not going to save money on that process, but you may, you may promote. We did look at what, if you take out like the infiltrative amount, that first amount of rainfall, it really doesn't affect the 10 or the 25 year design storm. So this main is designed for a 25 year design storm. So the probability is that it wouldn't, wouldn't happen but once every 25 years.
Except aren't those happening like once every five years now?
Yeah, it's really more a probability of happening in any one year, but yeah.
But are we, would we be improving the current catch basins because we have one that's on the intersection of Center and South that's been collapsed and we're not touching it because we're assuming that this is all going to be upgraded and changed when we do this project?
Yes, that's right. So that'll be addressing those deteriorating catch basins that are old brick structures that are falling in on themselves, like right at that intersection on the screen there, two that are caving in the road.
Right.
So what we would do is they wouldn't be, and would they, and they would connect to the drainage system? They wouldn't actually just drain?
They would not percolate.
So we're not adding like additional measures, we're improving the existing catch basins?
Yeah, replacing.
I think there's two or three extra catches.
Yeah, I thought we were.
Okay.
Yeah, we are, we are addressing the ponding that occurs there to have more inlets into the drainage systems. And then there's also what we have right now is a bid alternate for repaving of the street, a mill and overlay of the street, and doing that would promote, you know, better water getting into those new catch basins. And the reason that we've set it up as a bid alternate, at this point, we're at the 60% design here, but ready to go for permitting, is that if the budget worked out where you could afford to do the water main drainage and the mill and overlay, then great, do it. If you don't have a budget for it, then it's very easy to not do that piece, save to do the final restoration for another year. I know that's not the preferred option, but it gives the Village flexibility from a contract, like a bidding perspective.
Karen, I know it's been a while since you and I talked about this, but we went through a budget exercise. Remembered it said, here's our ARPA funds, here's our projected highway chip paving money coming into next year, and there was one other catch. And we looked at the original budget estimate and there was, I mean, it could go up as high as $900,000 if you assumed an X amount of overrun, not overrun, but costs.
Contingencies, yeah.
Cost contingencies, yeah. But realistically, we were looking at, if I remember right, $600,000 to do this project, correct?
Well, I think more, I would say, I mean, yeah, so initially we said about $930,000.
That was with the, that was with the 50% contingency.
Yeah, before we done the design, that number we had. And the water main portion is about the same now as it was. Advancing that design 60%, the cost for the water mains is about the same as when we, before we started the design. However, the drainage piece is considerably more than we thought it would be after we did the assessment of the existing drainage condition.
So what are we up to?
So all in, if we do the repaving and mill and overlay with that bid alternate, 1.7 million is the estimate. Now, we do have 20% material bidding contingency, so that's meant to address some of the uncertainty of the current, you know, bidding climate of construction. It's also meant to, so we're putting together numbers that are current now, we're not going to construct it until next season to escalate those numbers, you know, as we all are aware of inflationary pressures going on everywhere.
So.
Holy moly.
We've known this in a way. I mean, we had the budget discussion and Brandy came in and brought in the $900,000.
And that was in the.
We all talked about not doing storm drains, right?
No, that was including the storm drains at the 900.
That's right, but we wanted to pare the cost, so we talked about not doing the storm drains at that budget meeting. So where I'm at is that we're doing a 10 year road, let's just slant the road to wave, the water to run off, replace, repair those two catch basins and like all the other.
What about the water line?
Well, no, we do the water line, we have to do.
Just pare back on the drainage piece of it.
But just work on the drainage piece later because that's what we did when we did Livingston and Chestnut and Platte. We basically, when they milled the road, they did the water runoff and.
But we did catch basins and everything else there.
We did a handful of seepage pit catch basins, which may not work here because this is a terminal. It's probably going to be.
Do we need to make that decision now?
The only thing that we're, we want to get everyone's buy-in on this, but the next step is to go forward with permitting applications, so we need to talk with the DOT and the Department of Health. The Department of Health doesn't, the county Department of Health doesn't care about the drainage infrastructure, the DOT certainly will. So try to understand what the scope, particularly crossing East Market Street is, is important right now. But other than that, it can be decided before going to bid, which would hopefully be this winter.
So how are we going to, we were going to pay for, we were going to pay for the water part of it through a bond, right?
No.
No.
So we were just going to pay for?
Through ARPA money.
We had talked about using ARPA chips, using a portion of fund balance from the water and a portion of fund balance from the general.
So we were going to be able to pay all of this with cash?
No, we were looking at, though, at that time, it was the 900.
But also.
Not the 1.7.
No, I know, but we were going to, but we were originally going to pay for whatever it was originally using cash and not bonding for any of it.
Right, but the chips money, we didn't anticipate doing the project that we're doing now, so we do need to relook at all of the funding sources.
Because the chips funding is going to the.
The project they're doing.
On the sidewalks.
No, I disagree. We did look at, because we said we were, if we were doing this other, pivot into the other, chips money coming in next year would go towards.
Right, just the portion of chips coming in next year, but we'll have to relook at it because I think that you thought that this was not going to happen, so we.
This year.
Correct. So they did the chips project this year and I don't know that what we're going to get next year with ARPA, but I think we should definitely look at it.
How, question for you, so obviously the drainage section is super expensive. Is it worth getting it permitted now and having those plans in our pocket so that we can say in three years or in five years, we can?
If we get more infrastructure money.
Yeah, we can put together a plan and be ready to go, is that, rather than, I mean, you guys are already working on this, is that makes sense? Board or, or you guys get the permit and then understand that we have something to be addressed over time?
The critical line is we have to do the water.
No, I'm not talking about the water, I'm just talking about the drainage component.
So what's going to happen is the DOT is going to make you repave that intersection, they're not going to allow just a trench for the water. So that just means you're going to have an additional cost. If you do put the drainage line there in the future, yes, it'll be permitted, but you'll just need to repave that intersection again. So it's just repaving it twice if you put the pipe in now.
The 308 intersection you talked about, and that's really expensive.
Yeah, they made us do that with Route 9, I remember.
They let us do 11 feet.
What?
They let us do one lane, which is 11 feet.
Yeah, they let us do one lane, but we had to do it like three times.
So we'll do this one lane.
They're going to cross both lanes off. Yeah, you're right, if you don't approach on the other lane, they'll let you do it just to the shoulder, yeah. But that doesn't work here, so.
But how long is the, if we get the permit, how long is the permit good for, like five years, three years?
I don't think it, it's four years actually.
You may be able, you can renew it, you know, if there is a timeline, you should be able to renew it.
But if we paid 15, 20% for engineering, that's going to be a big ticket for the drainage here, if it's 1.7 million.
So here's the problem, though, they cambered the drainage and it's insufficient.
It's, it's all insufficient.
So therefore, we should leave it insufficient.
The problem is the funds are insufficient.
Livingston Plant and Chestnut were the same. I mean, I was there, I mean, I, every day I was looking at that trench.
Right, it's all insufficient, it's all getting worse and we don't have the money to pay for all of it.
Not right now.
This drainage does affect those in Chestnut.
How does this drainage affect, you said it goes all the way back to Platte, like how is, how does that work?
The watershed and catch basins that reach up.
Oh, so like all the catch basins are connected and?
The water comes here through the Center Street corridor to get down to the Landsman Kill.
Starting at Platte.
Not all of it, though.
No, just portions of it.
Because there was one that went all the way down to that, the Lions Park from Platte too, there's a line.
There is a portion that comes from Platte west of Mulberry, I think, towards Parksonage and then down Parksonage.
And down Parksonage.
The Village has very few drainage networks, but they're like little tree branches that reach out and then the trunks all come to the land.
And I think the problem is this branch is a large branch.
This is larger than.
It's too large for what it's capable of holding right now.
So it's being asked to deal with more water than it's capable of.
Right, and I mean, you could go look at where this dumps into the Landsman Kill on any storm, coming out of that pipe, which is a large pipe there.
It's full.
It's full.
And fast.
It's just, we did rip wrap and we replaced it and it took the rip wrap away. That's how much water.
That one, existing old one, can you go back to the Landsman Kill shot where we had the?
Yeah, the next two pages, right there, yeah.
Is this, this one takes quite a bit too, though. This is existing, right? That takes quite a bit because it takes a lot longer in here.
Yes, there's another line that goes to the west, I guess, there, down on the page and picks up flow and then also to the north, yeah. So we did try to pare back the drainage scope, like as you mentioned, there's a lot of places that need drainage improvement from the Village, but we tried to focus on just the corridor and those catch basins that are directly connected to it to try not to, you know, get too expensive with the improvement, so.
I mean, could we run like a debt analysis on this and like, do we have to make this decision right now?
No.
No.
Okay, good.
No.
I feel like I have nowhere.
That's why we're bringing this in, so everybody gets a feeling because it's been kind of sitting out there and nobody's been moving forward on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we, can we green, can we say yes to the water main section and then figure out are we going to do with the?
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
You can do anything you want to do. Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
What's the breakdown, Dan, what's the breakdown?
As far as like drainage versus water main?
Yeah.
So without any contingencies and general conditions, the water main is projected to be about 300, let's call it 310,000.
But that's without contingencies?
Yeah, without contingencies, just the main.
It's just main, it's no street.
Whenever you ask me that.
No, don't.
He just said 310.
And so drainage?
Drainage improvement is about 490,000. And then the restoration work of the road for repaving and replacing sections of curbs that exist is about 325,000.
And that's a road.
Okay, so like without contingencies, that's just over a million dollars total?
Yes, 1.15.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't include some other like mo, demo, general conditions kind of stuff that a contractor would charge as well.
Whatever those are.
But yeah.
They're charging out for dropping the trucks off and picking them back up again.
Bonds, insurance, all those kinds of fun things.
Right.
So, but if we do the water main, we're going to be doing the road at least, so those two pieces.
Doing it up the road.
Right, so we're going to be doing the, I mean, we're doing the, if we do the water main, we're doing the road, that commits us to $800,000 approximately?
625 without contingencies or any of this other garbage that they were talking about.
So the other thing we talked about was not doing Center Street and not crossing East Market and just do Center, right? I think, I thought there was like.
You mean like between East Market and South?
Yeah.
Yes.
We could do that.
And not do Center. Not do the other side of Center.
Not do between Livingston and?
I know you guys don't, you really don't like that, but we don't, we have better service lines.
Not do anything over there, except repave the road.
We need to repave it, but.
Repave the road and that's it.
Because everyone's got a copper service line that's in fairly good shape.
So no drainage, no water, just mill and overlay the road.
Yeah, that's my question.
East Market Street up to Livingston?
Yeah.
I would ask a paving project, so I'd love to look at what, I would just quote you guys and, you know, back calculate what you might be.
Well, then we have a dead end with.
Right, but then how do we connect the water?
Well, no, no, we don't have a dead end, we start, the dead end is at South, is at South and Center.
Can we connect Village Hall and the police department and all the rest of it to the water dead end at South Street or does it have to come from Livingston because of, I don't know, elevation or whatever?
No, it doesn't have to, like if you just, yeah.
The circulation would be better.
If we connect to the South Street line with the new.
And then dead end it at East Market for?
Bring it up this way.
Yeah.
Right.
So what you're saying is?
And then tie into wherever it ties into.
It's not as good.
What?
It's not as good as going all the way to Livingston for.
Correct, it's not as good.
But it would work.
But it would work.
It would work.
So, you know, cut down that, eliminate doing the other side, the north side of Center.
North side of East Market.
North side of East Market, excuse me.
I think it'd be interesting to figure out a way to just bond for the whole thing. I don't know what our net load is, so like this is me speaking completely out of class, but.
I think that we should have a meeting and go over everybody's capital projects that they're putting on the table.
I agree.
I feel like I'm losing my ARPA because we already kind of decided that in a way like that this was going to go for a water line because of the big debt that we're taking on.
Are we about to spend it on trees? I mean, I don't know, like, we're not losing ARPA.
Well, how do you figure that?
Yeah.
No, we had already said that we were going to, we were going to reserve a lot of that ARPA money for the water line.
Yeah, that's what I said.
It still is.
I think we're still there.
Center Street.
I don't know anybody who said anything different.
No, I mean, I just don't want to lose the.
You haven't lost it with any of us, Brandy.
It's still a priority.
What we're trying to do is pare down this project to something that may be affordable to something that may be affordable right now, and your suggestion is don't do the drainage. My suggestion is don't do north side of East Market.
Yeah, it's just like all different ideas. I mean, I would be curious to see what the, the whole project, you know, do it right, and like, we have the plans sorted and all the rest of it. I'd be curious to see how, what that would look like if we bonded for it. I'd also be curious to see what it would look like in, you know, piecemeal and smaller and all the rest of it. I think, in, in general, I think that's the purpose of long-term municipal bonds, is to do long-term municipal infrastructure projects, and so, you know, maybe not the road part of it, because that's a 10-year thing, but certainly the, the stuff underneath the road. No.
All right.
I'd be curious to see that.
Yeah, so I would like to do that, though, in conjunction with what Karen said.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because we also have a big.
We have a lot of projects on our plate, right?
We also have two LEA grants coming up and big projects.
Yeah, we have some, two big projects, and everything else already bonded for.
I can tell you that Brian and I have talked about those service lines coming off of Livingston, and they're fairly sufficient, so if you put a 10-year road over it, you know, hopefully they won't.
Then we think about this in 10 years.
They won't leak in 10 years.
For that portion of it.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you're saying is pick up both drainage and water?
Over here.
Over here.
Does it make sense to do the drainage?
So basically, lop off the north?
Yes.
Okay.
But does it make sense to do the drainage on Center Street just between East Market and South?
Sure.
And, and like, going down to the Landsman Kill?
That would make, that would make more sense than doing the northern portion of it.
Okay.
And I would just say that I guess if you're.
Yeah, because you want to make it bigger and further down the tree trunk.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, but we would do it down Center Street in front of Village Hall, in front of the police station, and all the way to the dead end. So I'd like to come back with three things. One, grant suggestion of eliminating the drainage. Two is eliminate everything on the north side of East Market Street.
Other than repaving.
Other than the repaving, correct. And three, we need to do the evaluation of, can we bond for this? And how much would it be?
Right.
Right, with that, and that's a Karen issue, not your issue.
And there's no grant money.
And we say evaluate, we don't know what it's going to cost. That's really what you mean, like, if we change.
I want a cost, I want a cost for this two things that I gave you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you can get drainage, you can spend CHIPS money on drainage if it's in connection with repaving.
Correct.
Yeah.
But we're looking, that's, we got to look at next year, here's how much money we have.
Right.
Projected next year, given.
What we're going to spend next week.
Yes.
And I don't think you can use CHIPS money for debt service.
No.
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 Is there ever like a world where we can be like, hey, we're doing a big project, can you give us more money this year and less money next year for CHIPS?
No, not for, not for New York Bay and CHIPS. It's whatever we get, it's based on our road mileage.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay, I think we have a direction. Can we do this next month?
Sure.
Okay?
Is there any like.
We'll put you earlier in the agenda.
Stormwater mitigation discharge.
Unfortunately, the state's programs, like we, you know, SRF, do not extend drainage infrastructure unless you have a combined sewer that you're separating, so that you have separate sanitary sewer.
I can arrange that.
So, yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah, we don't do that.
You know, the only thing we don't have clear visibility on right now is what the CHIPS program may look like. There's a lot of infrastructure money from the federal government from what we know so far. It looks like it's going to flow through programs that are already in place. So, you know, will there be more, you know, you may, you guys may have more insight into that from what you're hearing from like MadCon, but that all seems to still be coming together, so I can't say with any.
And we also have a deadline on ARPA.
We do?
Yeah.
I thought they'd basically stopped paying attention to it.
I don't think so, I don't think, Karen, because you know, I thought we had to 2024.
I think so, yeah.
Oh, we'll spend this by 2024. Oh, yeah.
We only postponed it a month.
You just can't spend it in all the different places you want to spend it.
I just want to let you know that if you don't spend that $230,000, you're going to lose it.
I mean, I can come up with six ways to spend it tomorrow.
So can I?
We've got a place for it.
All right, so we.
Just one more thing, I think what I'll do in this option of removing the drainage is those structures that are falling in on themselves and need to, especially if they're going to repave them, we will, can keep that.
Yeah, that only makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Wouldn't you be for anything else this evening?
No.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome to hang out, because otherwise.
There's always a way to go. We're talking to Susanna.
All right, move, let's move on.
Hey, I need to see who I'm spending all my loans, so. Stay around.
All right, the next is, Lydia, this is your needs assessment funding.
Oh, yeah, the presentation that Neville Smith, Smythe?
Smythe.
Smythe. Neville Smythe gave us last month, was it last month? On Red Hook Responds, doing a needs assessment for Red Hook and Reinbeck in terms of, oh, it's more.
With Pattern for Progress.
Thank you, the Pattern for Progress part, thank you. It is more, the information that they're going to be collecting is more detailed than what we're collecting through the Comprehensive Plan Committee, but it will be very useful for the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and so I recommend that we support them at the same amount that the Village of Rhine, Red Hook is supporting them, which is $2,000. I am comfortable having that currently come out of the Comprehensive Plan line item. And then we will figure out the Comprehensive Plan line item once we know whether or not we have a big grant going into it. So that is my motion.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good, thank you, Lydia. Next on the agenda is the AT&amp;T Towne Project. Brian, you kind of looked into this, if you want to.
Yeah, so it's an $82.64 a month increase from AT&amp;T, and Crown Castle said it's basically for the, the, the DC power cable is just a little bigger. It went from 14.76 square inches to 15.48. So I looked at the agreement, the amendment, word for word, and it's the same as the other one, so we should be good.
So $991.68.
A year.
Is this, is this an expense? Or a revenue? Is this an expense or a revenue?
Revenue.
Yeah, Crown Castle, that's our 50% of the revenue share with Crown. Now, Sprint is, did you notice that Sprint has pulled their equipment off the tower?
Yep.
So, did we get a termination letter from them at all?
Oh, is Sprint no longer working with Crown Castle?
They're not with us.
Or with us?
No, T-Mobile, Sprint and T-Mobile.
Oh, they merged.
T-Mobile's on the department store, so apparently that's the site that they chose to keep.
Darn it.
So we lost a couple grand a month, or three, 2,000 a month, I think.
Really, they're that expensive?
Yeah, they're paying like four grand a month. I mean, Crown gets half, and we get half, so.
I don't know how much they pay.
Wow.
Well, because we were getting 6,000 a month.
Well, they're probably still paying for it to determine the lease, even if they pulled it off.
They can terminate with like 30 days' notice for any reason, pretty much. That's, that's what those clauses usually say.
Well, have we gotten that letter yet? Probably not.
I haven't seen the letter.
Yeah.
So we're still getting 6,000 a month here. Do we, do we have the tower on our liability insurance?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Yeah, that's my thought.
So, Brian, I'm not 100% sure that Sprint is terminated, because what I was told by the guys that work in here is they're removing the obsolete equipment.
It's all gone, everything's.
But whatever they did a year ago, or whoever did, I was under the impression they removed the obsolete equipment, not terminated, so.
Right, it's, I mean, it certainly seems like there's nothing left. Like, they don't have their equipment cabinets, they don't have their antennas on there. I mean, they might put a new application on there.
They were all unused, they told me. Everything that they took off the ground was unused equipment.
Well, that, wow.
Everything's gone, I don't know.
You're not listening to what I said.
Zero.
You're not listening to what I said. What they said was, everything that was on the ground inside that fence area was no longer being used, and the same way with the stuff up on the tower was no longer being used.
Okay, but there's.
So they're still paying for the ghost.
It's a ghost tenant.
But they're still paying?
We'll take ghost money.
They think they're still a tenant, so.
So they're just holding on to the space for some reason?
I think they, they did a mess of upgrades a year ago. There's a whole mess of upgrades that went on that sink.
They're gone, I mean, there's no, only antennas on our AT&amp;T and Verizon.
Well, I don't know, I can't, I can't, I don't look up there and say, oh, that's AT&amp;T, and that's, you know.
Well, that's what it is, it's the two that are left. You can see the core axle cable going under the road.
Out of curiosity, is this something that we have to have Crown Castle manage for us?
I mean, JNS came in and they have a agreement for the useful life of the tower.
Right.
And you, if you want to argue with like the largest tower company in the country.
Right, like Verizon would rather deal with them than with like the Village of Reinbeck.
Well, no, I would, we don't need, if I were on the board when this was signed, I would have done it a different way, but Crown is going to be, have a 50% split of everything, and if we tried to take that away from them, then they would really fight. I mean, I don't think we would win that battle.
Who owns the tower?
We do.
We do.
Our tower.
And so we pay them 50% a month just to like manage the Verizons and AT&amp;T and Sprints and.
We lease the tower to them, they pay us.
Oh, got it.
We have, we have.
We don't pay them.
We're the landlord.
Yeah, we're the landlord, okay.
Which is unusual, because usually like you'll have, you'll have a tenant, and they'll own the tower, and then they sublease it, right, to the other carriers.
Right.
But we own the tower. JNS wanted to do that because it saves zoning issues and also taxes, you know, because you probably won't levy against municipality if they own the tower.
Right.
But you're currently doing an evaluation with.
With what?
What's his name?
With Wireless Edge, to see if there's any possible improvements.
Yeah, and there's a lot of documents that are under this roof that apparently, that he and I have not seen, found. So I'll have to do a deep dive on that.
Okay, so in the meantime, we're going to get an extra $1,000 a year, and we're going to try and figure out a way to make this work a little bit better for us.
I don't think we're going to, okay, we'll look into that. I mean, it's, it's a scrub, which is what you want, right?
Yeah, now I get it.
Yeah, it's been a long time, and we haven't scrubbed it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and the reason for that is because, you know, Crown's our agent, and we're habsies with them, so we're not doing typical scrutiny of contract administration.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Crown Castle.
Amendment.
Amendment to our current tower to increase our revenue by $991.68 per year, beginning on September 1st, 2022.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Accept the court audit, okay? Every year, this is a yearly, yearly thing which we are required to do. So this is sent to us by our auditor, which was Lori Dotty, a certified public accountant, that verified that our courts, I don't need to.
That's the agreement.
Well, I think I have it, but.
Oh, you have another copy? Because I kind of, I did mark up that a little bit. If you have another original, that's fine.
Yeah, I got it, thank you. So I have, you know, so they, they basically said this reporter, his findings, all deposits tested were made timely within 72 hours upon receipt, all reports are filed by the 10th of the following month, as required by the Office of State, Controller Handbook, and Town and Village Justice, Justice and Court Plurals. All checks are drawn on individual justice bank accounts are emitted to the village fiscal officer the date the report was filed. I make a motion to accept the audit as submitted by the auditors on our courts.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sounds like Trish is doing a good job.
What?
Sounds like Trish is doing a good job.
I forgot.
No, this is the auditor, yeah, but, yeah, getting the checks. It actually goes through Karen a lot.
Okay, oh.
Karen, because the checks go through there, yeah. Next is the Village Hall cleaning proposal. If you remember, we used to have an independent contractor working on Village Hall. We have subbed out the police to that same independent contractor. When this independent contractor was no longer available for five months, we collapsed it into one. We're currently paying for this building to have that person, that company cleaned this building, 1,250 a month. The proposal to go back with our original cleaner is $800 a month.
Oh, she's back?
Yes.
Oh, great, she's lovely.
We've had no complaints, we had some discussion about, independently here in Village Hall, about, they do a great job over at the police station. Pete is meticulous, they are meticulous, but yet there's been a lot of areas missed here, and we're paying 1,250, but we're going to get a $450 savings if we go back to where we were, with no complaints. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Ayesha McClinton to do the cleaning of Village Hall, to include all offices, courtroom, bathroom, stairs, hallway, entranceway, and include the fire department, bathroom, stairs, hallway, and entranceway, to perform weekly.
Second.
Any discussion?
She's just back from basic training.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
$400 a month.
Karen, you should be clapping.
Well, we didn't plan on spending.
So it's no saving, no savings, so it wasn't.
Okay, special request. First one is the American Legion Unit 429 to do their traditional Halloween parade. It's a 36th annual children's Halloween parade and costume competition. They step off here at Village Hall, and the parade ends at the Reinbeck American Legion Hall. It's scheduled for Sunday, September, October 30th, starts at noon, between noon and 1:00, well, setup time is between noon and 1:00, excuse me, step off at 2:00, and all tear down by 6:00 PM. Anticipated 100 children, plus parents and families, you know, basically, it's a cute little thing, a lot of walking down.
Do they have to get a permit from DOT?
They do.
Is this subject?
I'm not aware that they have that, but yes, they've been asked to produce that permit.
And they, they're supposed to get an insurance certificate?
Yes, I have the insurance certificate.
Oh, you do?
I have the insurance certificate, it was in our package, yes. The only thing we don't know is if, you know, it's been approved by DOT.
So let's just make it subject to that.
Yeah, remember that.
They did not use the current form in terms of the current event form, which is, which is to provide a sensory safe space, so they've been, we've reached out to them to also work on doing that. So this is approved pending DOT.
Yeah, I think.
I'd like to make a motion to accept it, second.
Second, pending DOT and autism.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Very good. Next is.
Center clause?
Center clause. Hudson Valley Communications, Gene Fleming, the 15th Annual Center Clause.
Wow.
One day events are part of the Dutch history of Reinbeck that involves performances, workshops, parade, and street performances. The event date is December 3rd. The event's startup time is 7:00 a.m. You know, they set up starting 7:00 a.m. Actually, the events start happening at 10:00 a.m. And it's usually over between 5:30 and 7:00. It's usually by 7:30 the parade ends. I will let you know that we've already had advanced planning meeting with our police, our fire, Douglas County Emergency, State Police, Sheriff, Police have all participated in our annual planning meeting for this event. They have all signed off and said, we've been there, done that. We actually know what to do. Pete runs a great job and so they've all approved it.
He ages 10 years every time Center Clause happens.
Yes. He's getting, he's getting better at it though.
I know, but.
Getting better.
God, stressful.
All right.
He's going to be, qualify as a grumpus pretty soon.
They did not use the form, but they've got back to us and they will be using the Beacon Arms Library for their sensory safe space.
Wonderful.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve Hudson Valley Community Productions for the 15th Annual Center Clause.
Also pending DOT approval?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can we get a head count this year?
We did it last time and it was estimated between 10 and 12.
So we're doing the mass gathering permit?
Oh, yes. Yes, that's required. Anything above five. That's why we bring in all these other, that's why we bring in all the other agencies into this as well. Okay, next is the Buckley Middle School Madagascar Day. I don't know if everybody remembers it. They go around and they hang, you know, beautiful horseson with rope.
Student artwork.
On our trees. It's artwork, right? We've approved this in the past. I don't see any reason not to approve it again. It's student artwork. We hung from the trees along East Marcus Street from the 1st of October to the 28th of October. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Madagascar Day. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, I gotta go back to Center Clause. There was a second one there. The second application is for the use, I'm backtracking, sorry. This is for Center Clause, this is for the use of Village Hall. For the use of Village Hall for the Toy Theater as part of the 15th Annual Center Clause Celebration Set Up, December 2nd, Event December 3rd, Cleanup December 4th. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Toy Theater in Village Hall.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry. And last, Reinbeck Interact. Reinbeck Interact would like to conduct a car wash fundraiser to raise money for the Chancellor Libberson Food Backpack Program. It's a car wash that will take place in a lot here behind Village Hall, right? So that it will start at 10:00 a.m. on Sunday during the farmer's market and end at 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, October 9th. Fire has signed off on approval of it. Pete has signed on of approval of providing they can get out if they need to get out and so.
The ambulance can get out?
Ambulance will be reparked and repositioned.
Okay.
Water will be supplied from the firehouse.
Great.
Pete needs to get access in and out. That's his only criteria.
Did somebody give a heads up for the farmer's market? Because some of the vendors park back here.
It's not going to interfere with any of the vendors parking back there because it's directly behind and taking up the space where we park.
Ah, okay.
It's not that part. It's this part.
Just that part, okay.
Okay.
Space where we park?
Well, space is reserved for Village Hall, Sunday, October 9th. You know where the police cars park?
Where the police cars park?
Where the police cars park and then the next section is reserved for Village.
Okay.
There's two sections there. It's in that, it's right behind the bay doors.
All right, great.
Okay.
Vanessa never drives here.
All right. Big test?
You need parking?
There's plenty of parking.
Parking's a problem around here.
I don't understand. Only 60% of our parking is being utilized, according to others. Hours of anticipated park was 11 to 3:00. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Reinbeck Interact, October 9th event.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to recuse because my daughter's an officer.
I think you can give that a resounding aye.
I don't think you have to recuse for that. Your call.
Unless she's giving.
I told her I was going to recuse myself and she's, what does that mean?
I'd like to make approval to approve the minutes for July 12, 2022, August 9, 2022, and not 8:30, 2022 because they're not there.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm going to recuse myself because I don't remember seeing those. Which one are you recusing?
Yeah, they were sent out.
Oh, I need to recuse myself from the 12th.
Okay. Wait, is this one, we looked at them on email. Is that right? Okay.
I don't remember seeing the one for 8/9. Crap.
I wasn't here 8/9.
You were not?
No.
All right, let's do it one at a time.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for 7/12, 2022.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Anybody abstaining?
I have to abstain.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for August 9, 2022.
I haven't seen them.
Second.
Abstain.
Second.
Did they come out?
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Read your emails.
Yeah, Lydia, I think these were emailed a while ago.
Yeah.
Not both of them, just the 12th, right? It just seems like a long time because this was.
We haven't had this meeting in time.
Did I do the one on the 12th?
You did the one on the 12th.
Yes. Okay. Are we good to go?
So just Lydia for the 12th and Brad for the 9th, correct?
Yep. Gary for the 12th too.
Yes. Oh, sorry. You're right. I was not here on the 12th.
Yeah.
Okay. Treasures report.
Okay. I can make this kind of quick because it's pretty standard this month. I will just go right, the general water and sewer funds are within range for this time of the year and the end of the April, or the end of August. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total 137,066.72. In the water fund, 50,0974.64. In the sewer fund, 32,0991.22. And we have one purchased from the Capitol Police account for 2,020 dollars for equipment. And for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, we have bills totaling 14,884.79, the majority of those being the preparation of the WEA grant. An operating statement is provided with the revenue and expenditures through September 20th. The water and wastewater billing and adjustments as signed off by Trustee Nunaker are presented for authorization.
I make a motion that we approve the adjustments as presented for water and wastewater.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and I have a few budget amendments. I have the budget amendment from the Capitol Office to the data processing for the video conferencing equipment. It was approved last month, but I'm just doing the budget amendment for the actual expenditure of 5,990 dollars. The Capitol Police to the police equipment for the 20,020 dollars voucher that was presented. I have three budget amendments. In the attorney line item for union services, 2,500 dollars. Data processing equipment, 1,000 dollars. The police repair and maintenance line item, 5,700 dollars. The first two were, are over budget slightly and the police repair maintenance is an unanticipated repair that was also approved last month.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the amendments as presented.
Second. How are we already over budget in certain line items?
There was a lot of activity for the union.
Okay.
And I mean, there are years that we don't use it and then there are years that.
Got it. Okay.
That you've used. It's for the attorney, just for the union part of it.
Okay, okay.
Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's it.
Thank you, Karen. Department reports. Police, this is for August, the month of August. Total number of incidents in the town, 22. Total number of incidents in the village, 154. Total number of tickets in the town, 8. Total number of tickets in the village, 79. Total rest for 0. Total number of accidents for 8. A lot of activity in August.
Wow. Yeah.
Okay. Building, planning, and zoning. Lydia?
Building, planning, and zoning, the office took in 7,900 dollars of revenue this past month. This is the first month this fiscal year where it's been under 10,000 dollars. But if it carries on in this way, it's going to be dramatically above budget. That's them. Comprehensive Plan Committee, all minutes are on the webpage. The next meeting for the Comprehensive Plan Committee is on Thursday where they're going to be discussing and hopefully approving the village survey that's going to be going out to every citizen of the village. And ideally as, you know, much as we can capture from business, town, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's exciting.
What is the distribution for the survey? I mean, how is it being distributed?
There's a, oh, it's going to be online.
But how are people being notified?
So they're going to be talking about that on Thursday. My guess is from what they've been discussing, there's multiple ways to do it. So, and this actually speaks to something I would, I would like you all to approve. One, did you all get the postcards that we sent? You didn't? So we discovered a cool way to send postcards to everybody in the village. It's pretty cheap. And you just use mailing routes and this, this whole thing. So we'll probably do another postcard. Obviously, the village email, the village Facebook page. I'm going to be asking kind of every committee in the area to be sending out a notification. So I'm going to be asking you, Vanessa, for Climate Smart, and you know, a variety of town. I'm going to ask the town to send it out on their email, you know, because some people see some and some people see others and, you know. There's, we're, we're trying to actually figure out right now signage in the village. We're going to be putting little, you know, eight and a half by elevens. We, they are going to be putting eight and a half by elevens on all of the various bulletin boards, but those aren't always seen. So there's a question here of lawn signs, which we all hate. Or would it be possible and/or? The village, we're allowed to do, according to our own zoning code, temporary signs, banners, whatever. Would you all be comfortable with the idea of a sign of some sort, not a sandwich board, going on Village Hall itself to notify people with a QR code and all the rest of this is happening? And then that's, and then we're also probably going to be going door to door. We have an intern, oh, we got a barred intern. That was exciting. Yes. And so he's going to be helping the communications subcommittee maybe go door to door once we get the first round of feedback of who's done it and who hasn't done it.
We don't know who does it.
Is it anonymous?
Yeah.
It's, it's going to be done by address. And I haven't looked at the most recent version, whether it requires a name. The data will be anonymized.
It does not require a name or an address.
It does not require a name or your address?
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to have to figure out a way to not have it be duplicative. I don't know how, that's part of sort of the discussion.
And that was the discussion the survey committee had was.
How do we do this?
Well, it was agreed that not to make it specific to a name or an address to tie it back. There's going to be some demographic data, but the reality is people could fill it out more than once.
Well, all right, I'm going to then have a conversation with them. I try not to get into the weeds with them because it makes everything much more complicated if I get into the weeds with them, so.
I just know when we did that marijuana.
Yeah, no, we're going to have to figure out a way to make sure.
It shouldn't be more secure than that. I mean, we were looking for a thumbnail when we did that and that was great and helpful, but.
Right, yeah.
This is different.
It's going to need to be more secure than that. So we'll figure out.
That's where we're at.
Okay, all right. I'll have a conversation with the power recipe on that one.
What survey platform are you using?
I don't know.
Okay.
The invent. That's going to be handled by the planners.
But the question, let's put it this way, the questions are ready?
The questions are ready. They're going to be discussing them and approving them on Thursday. Everybody's very excited to get this feedback because we've done a, they've done an excellent job of, you know, doing a current situation inventory, like this is what we have. As I've described it, it's, you know, do we have sidewalks? So they've gone out and they've figured out where we have sidewalks, where we don't have sidewalks. And so now, you know, then they're going to analyze, okay, well, because we don't have sidewalks here, but we do have sidewalks there that kids can or can't get to school safely on sidewalks. We know the answer to that question. So then, once all the values come back through the survey, we will then, the committee will then know how to then address that. So it's like if the survey says, you know, we care that kids get to school safely and we care that we're not using gas-powered vehicles for everything that we do, you know, and we care about sidewalks, then obviously the fact that we have missing sidewalks, that's going to be a very straightforward recommendation. So, you know, there's a whole process to this. And I'm excited that we're getting to the point where we're going to be getting the community feedback on it. But the question for you is, can we put some kind of sign on Village Hall property to advertise the survey?
So Lee and I have talked about this. I am not, I do not approve lawn signs.
I know. Everybody hates lawn signs.
I don't want any more lawn signs scattered all over the village. But I do approve putting something out on Village Hall. We have done several times for many things.
Yeah, like a banner.
During the pandemic, we did it. We've done it for organizations. We have used this front place as a way of communication.
Right. Has it been done like via a banner in the past? Have we done it in the past?
Well, we've approved banners that have gone out front. We've approved displays. We've approved.
Okay.
All sorts of things.
So that's my question to you is, would you approve some sort of sign out?
I think a banner would be fantastic.
Yeah, a banner to kind of announce it. Okay.
And no lawn signs?
No.
Because they're asking for lawn signs.
They are asking for lawn signs. They have ordered lawn signs for, we have, they have a meeting on October 2nd and October 12th for the public and they've ordered lawn signs specifically for those meetings, to advertise those meetings. But I can reel them back on lawn signs for the survey.
We can't reel them back on the other one because they went ahead and did it without approval? Is that what you're telling us?
Well, they're putting it on private property.
On private properties.
Yeah. We're not putting any of it on public, they're not putting any of it on public property. So.
So then I guess if they approved, if they're doing it for them, how are we going to stop them from doing it for this? If it's going on private property?
I mean, they come to me for budget requests and so I can deny the budget requests. But, you know, the survey in some respects is more important than this, these meetings on October 2nd and October 12th.
Because we already, we already announce these meetings with postcards and all sorts of other stuff.
Right.
Yeah, what do you, what's your concern with the lawn signs?
The village is polluted with lawn signs all over the place for everything from rodeos to whatever, right?
This isn't Fred's car washing or.
I know. This is really important.
I know, but we can put a big banner up as well.
Yeah, but not everybody comes by Village Hall. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable having lawn signs for this as long as they're pulled up.
I do, I vote it. I'm telling you, I don't, I'm just.
Yeah, no, I get that.
Tired of all the lawn signs.
Well, to begin with, do I have your permission to do a banner on village property?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Well, then I'll work with them on the lawn sign question. In general, can I just take a straw poll on this one? They don't need our permission to do it, but can I have a straw poll on it?
I think it's important enough that.
Yeah, it doesn't bother me.
I think through November, there can be a lot of lawn signs.
I just feel like in the, with the lack of like, you know, having a newspaper or other communication channels, it's like we have, there's no silver bullet.
Yeah.
And so you have to like do a whole scattershot approach to get the word out.
There was a nice article in the Daily Kingston about it, but, you know, so I'll do what I can there. Not the Daily Kingston, the Daily Freeman. But, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Highway.
Okay. The guys have been out working, obviously doing brush clearance, north and south side of the village. We remain alternate sides until October, I think it'll be October 3rd is the first Monday and then brush pickup becomes continuous after that. They also patched Old Post Road for water department water leak. They repaired sinkholes on Mulberry, Livingston, ground mulch, are emptying the Big Bellies on the weekends, road repairs, North Parsonage, Somers Beach, Livingston, South Street, Center, and Monson near Joy, Mildenhatch Garden Street. I don't know if you've seen, the guys are trying to work on mowing and keeping the parks in good, good order. The, a vacuum truck came and cleaned out four of the catch basins on East Market Street. Hopefully that'll help with some of our flooding issues. There's a fair amount of work that was done on some of the vehicles. And there were mulch deliveries and they helped here at Village Hall with moving and organizing the records at Village Hall. And this isn't specifically highway, but I'm going to grab this moment. I was at a meeting of the Thompson Maserela Park Committee on Saturday and the committee expects that ground is to be broken on the soccer field, which will be an artificial turf soccer field, either this week or next. And it's hoped that construction will be done by the end of the year. There are not.
Where is that going to be?
It is, you know where the Little Pavilion is and the baseball field is?
There's a baseball field?
There's a baseball field. Depending on the tennis courts.
I've been, I've walked over there. I've never seen a baseball field.
It's opposite the baseball field.
Yeah.
It's opposite the baseball.
So over by the bathrooms?
Yes.
The very fancy bathrooms?
Yes, and that'll, that's the reason why they're there is because those fields are going to become used. And I believe there's going to be an artificial turf soccer field going in. There will be a space leveled and prepared that could be used for two baseball diamonds, but I don't think they're being installed at this time, but the space is there for it. There will not, there are currently not lights that are part of this project, but it is something that they are, will probably be, be happening is that they will be lighting that field at some point.
Really?
Yeah, so we want to talk and have some input on that. But it's been a long time coming and it looks like they're finally going to have this.
Couple decades.
Does the high school have lights?
No.
No. No. So just want to bring folks up to date on that.
You missed one thing. When I said repaired a couple of Big Bellies, they did replace all the batteries in the Big Bellies, which weren't working, but they also pressure washed all the Big Bellies.
Oh.
Which cleaned them up, which was a nice feature to clean up.
We've had a couple problems of people continuing to put their household refuse into the Big Bellies. So, public service announcement, please don't put your household refuse into the Big Bellies.
And I have seen a case where our village police have gone into somebody's trash, figured out who threw it out and have gone to, gone to their house.
What's the penalty?
This could happen to you.
Let me just talk home.
Public shaming.
God.
Put the stocks in front of the village hall.
Okay.
That's it.
Water, wastewater.
Matt Green started on the 10th. He's a welcome addition to the water department.
Super nice.
We are in receipt of chlorine gas again, so we ran out of chlorine gas and we ran out of liquid chlorine almost. And we found a local supplier.
Wow.
Which is Clean Destine. I can't say who that was. But now we have chlorine, we did get chlorine gas back and we never know when we're going to get it, but we should be good until like basically Thanksgiving with chlorine gas. We had another water main repair on Reincliff Road. And Grassmere is, presented their scheme to the Board of Health for feedback and see if that changes the scope of what they're going to do for us as far as the water mains. And we finally pulled, Jeff Cotter finally did the weeds over at the.
Okay.
Next year, we, I promise we'll, when we get staffed up, we'll get on top of the weeds instead of going this long without, without help with that. As far as wastewater, typical average month. We did apply for our EFC grant though and we met the deadline of September 9th. So that's the five and a half million dollar project that we may, you know, bring in a little bit, but we're going to see if we can get 25% grant on that. Oh, and I got to go back to water. We do want to buy a DLD digital leak detector. Some, I mean, it's kind of obvious usually where the leak is and it come, where it's coming out of the ground frequently, that's where it is. But this will be able to, when we do see a leak, it'll be able to pinpoint, you know, the noise and determine more exactly where it's coming from. Like on, on this one leak earlier in the summer on Reincliff Road, we were about, we started about 30 feet away from where the leak actually was because of the sloping and things. So this is a $3,195 item plus shipping charges. And we think it's, we'll probably pay back in droves, you know, after the first couple of leaks, so.
Cool.
Like to get a.
Second.
That's what I'd like to get.
All in favor, say aye.
So that's pretty.
Comes out of the water department fund.
Yeah.
Vanessa?
All right. This week is climate week. This is the first time we've done this here in Reinbeck, but climate week is a thing elsewhere in the world. So we're very excited to get on board. The public can check out all the.
The public can check out all the free public events and stuff that we're doing at, um, And we're really proud to be partnering with a lot of, um, community partners, especially Serra Library and Upstate Films. We actually received a grant, our Upstate Films received a grant, um, through the school district to have a free screening, um, of a documentary about youth climate activists at Upstate Films, generously underwritten by Rhinebeck Science Foundation, which is great. So we're gonna be doing a big bike to school, walk to school day. If it rains, it might get postponed to Friday, so stay tuned, um, it's supposed to be Thursday. I also wanted to give everybody a, a heads up, um, if you go over to the intersection of South Street and South Parson Street, um, there's a student-led project happening there, um, where the students identified that intersection and then the stretch down to the Lions Mini Park as an area that could be approved as a safe route to school. So they've put in, uh, some temporary cones with flowers in them, kind of marking off a temporary sidewalk, um, and they're going to be installing a chalk paint, uh, crosswalks at that intersection, so that should, again, weather, please, um, that should be happening, tomorrow, on Wednesday. Couple other updates. Our, our village compost pilot continues, and Ty and Bond will be submitting that grant application to DEC, um, for our municipal food scrap recycling initiative for a compost facility. I'm also applying for an additional grant through a foundation, um, so that's moving forward. I just got an update on the Flex Tech study of the Village Hall, um, and so I'll be sharing a document with you guys, this is just to keep that project moving forward, so we have, again, like a shovel-ready project, um, here at Village Hall to, um, to bring down our energy costs to heat and cool this building. And, yeah, I was also pleased we got, um, really high-quality, high-resolution, large-format maps of the village through our natural resources inventory project, um, so I think those are in Gary's office. And they gotta figure out a way to, um, frame those up and get those up on the walls so we can all enjoy. That's it.
Thank you. I also like to, not on the agenda, but I'd like to talk about September being National Preparedness Month. For those who don't know, we had two citizen preparedness sessions here in Village Hall that were, that were put on by the county emergency, uh, manager and the medical reserve corps. We had great attendance at both of, both of those events, everybody left with a backpack full of, I, suggestions and parts, pieces to prepare for emergency preparedness, so thank you to the county for, and, for doing that. We are planning an active shooter and stop-to-bleed class in participation with the Rhinebeck Central School District, the sheriff's office, and the medical reserve corps. That'll be happening on September 28th at the Rhinebeck Central High School in the Buckley Cafeteria, so that, um, at six-thirty, uh, if you can make it, please come, announcements will be going out soon. Uh, we've, in, in addition, we've had, we participated in planning for the Rhinebeck Healthcare Preparedness Coalition, and it's a full-scale evacuation, that exercise that was held today, uh, with the village of Rhinebeck PD, our fire department, uh, DPW, myself, and ERC, in an evacuation exercise out at, uh, the Baptist Brookmeet, so that went very well.
Wow.
And in addition to that, we, simultaneously, it was, it was a catastrophic event that occurred that was a result of flooding, and there was trees down, and there was houses, we had to plan evacuation routes, we had a table talk exercise.
You texted today, Karen.
Power was out to us all this morning. Yeah, and so that exercise was going on simultaneously to an Asher Dam break, so, at the same time, so.
So how'd we do?
This was an act, this was.
It's an exercise.
Oh, okay, I was like, holy Christ.
Exercise.
I thought the Asher Dam broke during the exercise, I was like, oh my god.
This is the exercise for National Preparedness Month, and the exercise was conducted by the village PD, fire department, highway, myself, and the emergency response coordinator, Kathy Tegbar, on this Asher Dam activation plan. It was a good tabletop exercise, we learned a lot. We figured out what we could do, what we couldn't do, and what we had to plan for. Uh, I'd like to give my thanks to Kathy, our emergency response coordinator, for planning all of these events during the month of September, uh, as part of her responsibility for emergency response preparation for us here in the village, keeping us all well.
Speaking of active shooter drills, uh, EMS is also going to be, going through an active shooter, um, drill on how to, you know, handle that while they're giving people first aid and getting them out.
And that's in October, like the first week of October.
Yeah.
Following this one, this other one is open to you all, if you wanna attend, RSVP will be required, but please sign up if you, if you want to attend this one, on the 28th.
God.
Okay. Tree commission.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you got it, right?
I think we got it, there are no action items, uh, in terms of, um, pruning or removals, other than what we've already discussed. I do wanna say that, um, members of the tree commission will be out and about, um, looking for hazardous trees, we're gonna be updating as best we can some of the database that we have. We can't do as, um, an exact job as some of the arborists, but it's clearly that there are some trees that are either suffering or died over the summer, so we wanna get a list of those and, um, figure out what's next to do with those, so, and thank you